Check.
We need to, we're doing the grant request, do you want it?
Yeah.
Okay.
We call to order the regular meeting of the Solvang City Council for June the 13th, 2016. Will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Deuce?
Present.
Jamison?
Here.
Skid?
Present.
Zimmerman?
Here.
Mayor Richardson?
Here. Before we do the pledge, I'd like, as we stand to do the pledge, to remember the victims of Orlando and take a moment to consider what we're pledging to. We're pledging to the United States of America. And remember, any attack on any American is an attack on all of us. So please stand with me with the pledge.
Take your hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, united in the midst of all.
Thank you, that was very well done. City managers report.
Just two short things. One, the conservation efforts in Solvang continue. In May, the water savings was 27 percent from 2013, and that makes for the whole year we're down 25.5 percent.
Just making the governor's budget.
Just making it, so. And then also in acknowledging employees with their five, 10, 15, 20-year anniversary, we have a five-year anniversary for Trevor Hawley in our wastewater department.
Fantastic. With that, we go to public communications, written or verbal. At this time, please direct comments to the city council regarding the consent calendar items or matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the council. Speakers are limited to five minutes. Tracy, is your tourist update right? Is that what you'd like to do it now? Please come forward. Tracy Farhat, followed by Chuck Stacy.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Tracy Farhat, Executive Director of the Solvang Conference and Visitors Bureau, and with me Greg Corso, our sales contractor and representative here for your tourism update because we have lots to say. I'm going to just, and then we'll do that. Don't go far. First of all, the bugs will be gone from the visitor's center. I wanted to thank the City Hall for taking care of that. So not only are the exterior bugs, but the interior bugs will all be gone. So you'll see the tent around the visitor's center for a couple days, and then that will be that, and we'll be back in there. But the visitor's center is still open across the street in the shack, so come find us and let's hope the temperature stays decent for that occurrence. We also wanted to say there were record Memorial Weekend visitation to such numbers where people said they haven't seen it like that in many, many years, so that was great to hear. We also hosted a LGBT-friendly diversity training workshop, two of them, and given the occurrences, I think the timing was just perfect. We all want to, in fact, one of the terminologies was that we should all become all welcoming, and so that's my newest buzzword, so I can say that. But I wanted to thank the VSYV who helped partner with us. We brought two workshops that helped hotels qualify for a training and to become tag-certified, which means that they have diversity training in their policies and they could implement that. So we had 39 attendees, including eight hotels and government attendees, et cetera, and done by David Paisley with CMI training. And thanks to the Hotel Cork for helping us with that event. We also have coming up Yelp Help, our summer open house for the tourism industry. It's going to be our Yelp Help and tourism tech tips. So coming on Wednesday, the 22nd of June, from 3:00 to 6:00 o'clock, you can register to have one-on-one appointments with the staff of the CVB, and we're going to help you recognize, to find out how to keep a positive online reputation, to see how to enhance your free listings, and to discover how to submit events, et cetera. And of course, there will be some wonderful wines by Last Point and some pizza, because we are right above Tower Pizza. So think about June 22nd, as well as, yeah, now Greg's report.
Mayor Richardson, City Council, just want to update you on what I've been up to the past couple of months with Tracy. In addition to our redesigned website, which we've monitored, Tracy and I attended a couple of travel trade shows, NTA and Go West, and I'll be leaving this week to go to IPW in conjunction with Visit the San Onofre Valley. Outcome of meeting of going to these trade shows is meeting with tour operators and then following up once we get back to town. The idea is to get them here in the village, and I've been taking them around retail, bakeries, tasting rooms, attractions, and obviously visiting hotel properties, two, three, and four diamonds, and getting to spend the night. They are beginning to plan, well, they are planning for 2017, '18, and one of the largest tour operators was interested in adding Solvang to their 10-day California tour itinerary. Unfortunately, the available properties which were budgeted for this tour were not up to the tour operator's supplier's standards and in need of remodeling. Although the two-night, two-year series did not pan out, we were able to secure a day trip with restaurant options for 24 Fridays in 2016 and 2017. Another tour operator who hadn't been to Solvang in 16 years with my invitation came and spent the day with us, and has now changed his 2016 holiday tour, which historically went up to Cambria, to now include a night in Solvang. 30 rooms, 40 people, day and a half, holiday shopping, and meals. And we also just learned, great news, that he is now looking to add another two-night Solvang itinerary for spring 2017, so it looks like we got him back. One of our best leads from the show was probably the largest inbound wholesale tour operator who we invited to spend the day and night with us. His company, his website's company, has 1.0 million, 1.5 million searches for Solvang in '14, and Tracy and I were blown away. In 2015, 2.4 million searches for Solvang on their website. These are international tourists going to their website, seeking information about us. So he came specifically to look at two, three, four diamond properties to fill his consumers' needs. They are now in the process of contracting directly with the tour, with the hotels that we visited here in Solvang. Lastly, we solicited, and I had the opportunity to lead a site visit for a UK group of nine agents and travel reps, and this was through our partnership with the Central Coast Tourism Council. They spent the night with us, and the following day, we toured the village and looked at lodging options while also enjoying food, wine, and shopping. Their takeaway was that Solvang was a unique offering here on the Central Coast with a strong history and proud inhabitants with a love and a passion for their town. In closing, I think the hotels have been really open and very friendly to myself and the tour operators that have come through. Looks like they're doing really well on weekends. My goal is to move that needle midweek. Attending these travel shows is really important, and again, my being proactive post-travel show is really key. It's building these relationships over time and keeping Solvang top of mind as a destination. Thank you all.
Thank you for your presentation. That's good news.
I've got a question.
Sure.
These tours that you are working on booking, are they midweek?
Some are. Some are weekend. What we're finding is when we do speak to the hotel properties and directly with the tour operators, it depends on availability for them. The one tour operator that is not coming here had to stick to an 10-day itinerary. She had two days open, they were coming through Yosemite, so it was limited to the two days here and the amount of properties that were available to fill that need for two nights over a two-year series.
Okay.
But I didn't mention that, but she is open to coming back. She really hadn't been here in a while. Again, Tracy and I met with her at NTA. She spent the day and evening with myself and Tracy the following day, liked what she saw, and is hopeful that if she comes back next year and the hotel is in need of renovation and told that they would be doing a remodel, so she's going to come back and take a look.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Chuck Stacy, followed by Hank Holmberg.
I know this is the right place to speak, but I sign off. I'm concerned about Skip Mesa. I've been concerned a lot of years of my life about Skip Mesa. We have lived for the last 39, 37 years right next to it, and each year, there's something new about Skip Mesa, and it gets scary. The original concept, you know, failed for a variety of reasons, and the scale on that was pretty good, you know? But now, you look out our, we don't have to look out our window, it comes to us. The buildings that are being built over there, we heard about limits and this or that, are coming right in our living room, or, you know, in our living room. And, you know, I just feel that there's nothing really consistent about this. It's this, that, people go broke, this or that, but it isn't a positive outlook. How about that berm that was up for how many years? 10, 12 years? All that's junk blew into our houses. Nobody cared about us, and now that berm is going to be used to God knows what. And you come over to our house and you sit on the deck, and you see these big, like, they look like mountain, like ocean cruisers, you know, across from us. There's nothing else in Solvang that looks like this. The densities for that type of house is really pretty tight, and I think we're going to hear it later and more in depth about these things. And I just am very, very dissatisfied with the way the city's handled this. There's supposed to be so many outlets or this or that. We have not been kept, you know, praised of things. The park lost part of itself. Yeah, how about that? A housing project, you know, can't figure out what to do with the water once they bought the land, and so who takes the hit? The park, the park. Nobody, you know, puts a water thing in a park. It could have been put down, it would have cost more money, but no, it happened. And so now, you go down that, that's not a park anymore. There's this big gated thing. It lost its whole sense of this. And I think this whole project's just been filled with this, time after time after time. And now we get these big, you know, these come to our house, be glad to sit on the back deck, and you can see what I'm talking about. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. Hank Holmberg, followed by Fred Koval.
Good evening, Mayor Richardson and council members. Appreciate you listening to me again. I don't want to be that guy that's here all the time, but want to mention a few things that Mr. Stacy mentioned also. I'm here to talk about the Skip Mesa project, and you guys have my emails already that I sent you with regard to the last phase. Let me preface again by stating we're all excited about Skip Mesa last phase being finished and done, and we'd love to see the houses there. We just don't want to see the houses that are 30-plus feet high after the grading and everything is into consideration. I talked to Ms. Pelster, and she assured me that she contacted the builder that Northern European is not going to be built on lots 159 to 169, which is on the edge of Adobe Mesa, or Adobe Creek, right along Hans Christian Andersen Park, probably where Mr. Stacy was talking about. But we have still an issue with French country style, and that style is 24 and 1/2 and 24 feet tall, and it wouldn't be such a problem, but the grading is about eight feet higher than the street, eight to 10 feet higher. As a matter of fact, on Thursday, the contractor, developer, had roughly 15 to 20 yards of loose dirt brought in from somewhere and deposited the more loose dirt on lots 164, 165, and 166, which is near Chalk Hill and Skip Mesa Road. So apparently, the grade that he already made, that's already eight feet tall, is not high enough for him, and he's going to go higher. So I have a question about what are the limits on the grades? We haven't had any answers with regard to that. No clear defined issue has been stated with regard to the grading. According to the original Skip Mesa plan, which is all we want the city to follow and the developer to follow, this was all adopted by the city, by council, by the planning commission, and by the BAR, and it's not being adhered to, quite simply. And I don't know why it's not being adhered to, but it's very clear that one-story structures are not to be anywhere around, or two-story structures are not to be anywhere near or around the periphery of the site. And those French countries are considered, as far as I'm concerned and the book's concerned, two-story structures. And I can read a little excerpt here. "The Northern European are clearly two-story because they're so high, but when they talk about A-2-4 French country style overview, the style is frequently characterized by an imposing entry with stone masonry accents. The roof shape, like the Northern European, is steep and usually with multiple hips and chopped gables." That's not conducive to what this is all about in Solvang. And according to the Solvang general plan, buildings should have harmonious relationships with the surrounding neighborhood. Significant factors in establishing this relationship are a sense of scale and roof lines. Clearly, the French country doesn't come under that at all. And also, according to the Solvang general plan, Solvang Community Design Plan, Policy 8D, buildings on major ridge lines, canyon lines, canyon edges, hilltops shall be made visually unobtrusive by sensitive grading and sighting. That also hasn't been done, and it hasn't been clear. So once again, I would like to have some kind of definitive answer by Ms. Pelster, city attorney, and Mr. Vidro, city manager, as well as yourselves, about what is going to be actually going on there, what the definitive heights are going to be as far as grading goes. Because you can have a 20-foot house, if you put 10-foot grading up, it's still going to be 30 feet high and obtrusive for everybody, including Mr. Stacy and about 15 of my neighbors who I'm representing. So I hope you represent us, your constituents, rather than a developer from Pismo Beach or Arroyo Grande. We don't have much to do with as far as climate change or who our next president's going to be, but we do have something to say about what happens in Solvang. And you people in this room are the people that have that control, and we hope you do the right thing. So I want to thank you.
Brad, can we make an appointment with him and Roy sometime soon to discuss it? To answer his questions?
We can. I mean, it'd probably be a wiser use of your money to have, just staff meet with him first rather than bring me down other than, or make him wait two weeks, but let's see how it goes in steps.
All right. Shall we meet with him and Arlene and you and myself? Okay. We'll set the appointment with you.
I appreciate that greatly. Thank you.
Thank you.
If he wants.
Sure. Absolutely, Chuck.
Bring the donuts.
Bring the donuts, he says. Fred Koval.
Good evening, Solvang City Council and Mayor. My name is Fred Koval, President of Solvang. Water. Three things have happened since I've been gone for a couple of weeks. Number one, a vacuum was created a couple of weeks ago, as you probably know, at a special meeting by the Water District, ID number one. They removed themselves from COME, Kuchuma Operations and Maintenance Board. It created a vacuum. We have the powerful South Coast with money, and we have the folks that are downstream, the pumpers. Lumpoke, Buellton, Solvang, the Water District, have, doesn't appear to want to start to unite, because big things are going to happen, real big things. What? The 23rd, 24th of this month, they will shut off the water to the South Coast while they move the barge and reconnect. July sometime, there will be the last downstream water for the South, for us folks. It'll run for about two weeks or so. After that, by the end of the year, we're going to be down to the magic number of 643 feet, where the hydraulics, the Deadpool, is in equilibrium. The question will be, what happens after that? If we are not united downstream of the dam, we're going to lose big. The bureau of reclamation is not doing anything. And then we have the water flowing for the biological opinion for the fish. Where's that going? There's two guys in Long Beach that don't want to put the fish in tanks. What is that going to mean? A depletion of the water on a continuous basis. Now, there was another special meeting just this past Thursday at ID number one. Closed session. Three items. The first item was to save the valley, who has a lawsuit against ID number one for supplying water to the Kuchuma tribe. Where's that going to go? The second item is involves solving. Your permit, 15878. Your application, 22423, is being discussed in closed session. Why? What does that mean? I haven't heard anything, except I see that you're going to have something on the agenda in that regard in closed session. We need some transparency here in this regard. The last item has to do with what I provided to you in the way of an email. Interesting. You're Belinda in Orange County. Prop 218, ridiculous trip levels. 50 percent plus one to prevent a raise in water rates? Well, it's being countered with a lawsuit. They want to do a referendum, and they're going to say, they're saying that a referendum will trump Prop 218. Now, I gave you the case number here, and I've also asked the person that wrote this article at the very end, Matt Stevens, to supply me with an update as to the outcome, because I wasn't able to find it on the internet. What's going to happen when, in June, at some time maybe, this judge is going to rule? If he says that rules that the referendum trumps Prop 218, it's going to open up a whole new avenue. And they're crying about a meter charge of 45 bucks. Well, I sent them the details, about my $75 meter charge for my 5/8 meter. I said, can you trump that? No pun intended.
Thank you, Fred. I have no other speaker slips. Does anyone wish to speak at this time that hasn't given us a speaker slip? Seeing none, we'll go on to the next agenda item, which is council comments and requests. Would you like to start, Mrs. Jamison?
Well, I have really good news. UCSB is going to Omaha. Yay, Gauchos! Let's see, I had the pleasure of attending Elveroi's most recent program that they had concerning the artwork that they have on the walls, and it was presented by members of the tribe, and you all should go take a look. The artwork on the walls is magnificent. It's very simplistic, very easy to look at, lots of nice colors, and it tells the history of the San Onofre Valley from way back when to present day. So I would encourage you all to attend. It's well worth your time. And another exhibit is out at the San Onofre Valley Museum, Historical Museum, is the Borin exhibit, and that's also unbelievable. Whereas the one at the Elveroi, the pictures are big and grandiose, his are small, and you have to get up close and personal to really enjoy them. So I would encourage you. And that's all I have.
Mr. Deuce.
No comment tonight, just welcome, everybody. It's fun to have a full house at least once a year.
Mr. Skid.
The only comments I'm going to make, guys, is that San Onofre, all days, looked like it was very successful this weekend. The weather cooperated, it was very nice out there. The other comment I'm going to make is in regards to, reference to something Mr. Koval was talking about, and Kuchuma is now down 89 feet from full. And as he said, it is going down, and it's about 14 percent capacity right now. So it's not going to be looking real good here through the end of the summer, so here's hoping that we have a wet year next year, but I'll believe it when I see it.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Just want to welcome everybody tonight. It's nice to see so many faces out there. And in regards to the water, it's a very complex situation, and easily put, we are progressively working together and hoping to unite downstream users. So let's hope for the best, but it is a very unique and complex situation. Thanks.
As for me, I'm glad to see a big turnout. It's, it gets lonely in here sometimes, and it's good to see, it's good to see people that are recognized and for, for coming for a good purpose. Correspondence received by the city council. Does anybody want to comment on the correspondence we received?
I just want to thank staff for putting it on the agenda. Thank you.
Approval of the agenda as presented. Does anybody want to change the agenda sequence? Nope. Onto the council minutes of May 23rd. Is there any changes, corrections, or adds or deletions to those minutes? If not, can I have a motion accepting?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, and all is in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That was passed. On the consent agenda, please, Ms. Martin.
5A.
Wait, that's a good, you caught me. Does there anybody wish to pull any items off of the consent agenda? Seeing not, then we'll, can I have a motion accepting the consent calendar?
I'll move.
Well, only if somebody wants to, wants to pull any items.
Well, they don't know that out there.
Would you, okay, if you'd like to read them, go right ahead.
Item 5A, approval of a warrant register. 5B, adopt resolution number 16, next in order, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Solvang, amending the appropriation limit for fiscal year 2016-17 pursuant to Article 13 of the California Constitution. Item 5C, approve reappointment to the Library Advisory Committee.
Of Shirley Stacey.
Shirley Stacey, yes.
Of Shirley Stacey.
Thank you for volunteering for that, Shirley. Now can I have a motion accepting?
I will make a motion that we accept the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
Second.
We call the roll, please.
Councilmember Deuce?
Yes.
Skid?
Yes.
Jamison?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes, and that was passed with a 5-0. Onto item number seven.
Item seven, grant applicant, agency presentations.
Staff report.
Good evening, Mayor Richardson and City Council. Sandra Featherson, your Administrative Services Director. Not really a staff report, but we're giving an opportunity for all the agencies who have requested funding for the upcoming fiscal year, an opportunity to speak.
Okay, very good. Now I have the speaker slips. Yes, go ahead.
I'd like to make a request for the applicants, that when they come up and make their presentation, that they give us a ballpark figure of the percentage that the grant is to their overall budget. I know you provide the information in the A resolution of the City Council of the City of Solvang, amending the appropriation limit for fiscal year twenty sixteen seventeen pursuant to Article thirteen of the California Constitution. Item five C, approve reappointment to the Library Advisory Committee.
Of Shirley Stacey.
Shirley Stacey, yes. Thank you for volunteering for that, Shirley. Uh, now can I have a motion accepting?
I will make a motion that we accept the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
Second.
We call the roll, please.
Councilmember Deuce?
Yes.
Skid?
Yes.
Jameson?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Uh, yes, and that was passed with a five oh. Onto item number seven.
Item seven, grant applicant agency presentations.
Staff report.
Good evening, Mayor Richardson and City Council. Sandra Featherson, your Administrative Services Director. Not really a staff report, but we're giving an opportunity for all the agencies who have requested funding for the upcoming fiscal year, an opportunity to speak.
Okay, very good. Now I have the speaker slips. Yes, go ahead.
Uh, I'd like to make a request for the applicants, that when they come up and make their presentation, that they give us a ballpark figure of the percentage that the grant is to their overall budget. I know you provide the information in the, in the application that we've had, but there's a lot of people in the audience on the TV who have no idea of how much you're really asking for, what kind of your, uh, what percentage of your budget that the city is providing. So if you could do that when you give your, uh, and it's, I know it's kind of a last minute, doesn't have to be absolute, but a fairly close ballpark would be appropriate. Thank you.
I, I would like to follow this, the recommended, recommended order, but I have a stack of these things. I haven't had a chance to sort through them, so I'm just gonna read from the top down, and I hope you can understand that. Thank you. Actually, first, Fred Kovall.
This is actually under the, this is specific to the agencies receiving grants.
He's asked for item seven.
That would be under the, when you get to that, the, uh, the council, council discussion of that? This is really just the agencies giving their report for the process.
Carrie McKinnon. Followed by Greg Koch.
If you'd like, we have the list here. We could go through the represented agencies. We put them in highest to lowest dollar order.
Call it out, that's fine. I don't have to do that. Very good, thank you.
Okay, the first is the Solvang Library.
Uh, Brad, Brad, just, just, um, just a question for, um, those of us that have to recuse on certain items. Can we listen to all this, and then we just, uh?
You can, you may listen to the presentations, just don't ask any questions on, on, or participate in any discussion that comes up. Uh, what we should do is just have all the presentations made, questions asked by council members, and then hold the discussion till later, so we can remove people when the discussion point comes.
Okay, thank you.
Now you're on, Carrie.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Richardson, council members, staff, and public. I'm Carrie McKinnon. I'm the supervisor of the Solvang, Buellton, Los Olivos, and Santianes libraries here in our valley. The library has requested a range of funding from the city. A low would be our eighty-eight thousand. A mid-range would be ninety-nine thousand five hundred, and a top support requested is a hundred and thirty-eight thousand. And I know that, um, my supervisor has met with you in your budget meetings, and so you understand the differences between those numbers. So I'm basically here just to thank you for your past support, to thank you for whatever you're going to decide tonight or in the future, and to answer any questions that you might have.
Are there any questions for Carrie?
My question is?
Oh, the percentage.
Percentage.
Okay. The eighty-eight thousand funding would be forty-three percent of our total funding.
Anything else? Thank you, Carrie. Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much.
Next is the Solvang Senior Center.
Good evening, Mayor Richardson, and City Council, staff, and the rest of our lovely community. I'm Ellen Albertoni. I'm the Executive Director of the Solvang Senior Center. I'd like to thank you for all of your past support of the Senior Center, which is a very important and vital part of our community. We have over four hundred members who come and enjoy our center. At, some on a daily basis, some on a weekly basis, some on an annual basis, but it's a place that's open to everyone in our community regardless of your financial status. It's a place of friendship and fellowship and well-being. We are requesting forty thousand dollars, and that is twenty-five percent of our revenue budget. It, our overhead is sixty-two percent of our approximately one hundred and sixty-two thousand dollar budget. We provide approximately, we're asking, excuse me, for the funding to cover approximately two thousand meals, three hundred hours of educational and exercise, and outreach newsletters. We've grown this year, so our, the activities that we would like to offer are, have grown. Our membership has grown, our hours of operation are about ready to grow also. We have a lovely Tai Chi garden that is just about done, and we wanna bring our folks outside. We also provide AARP help. We have had, open to the entire community for tax services this year, as we have in the past, but we're just, we're booming and bursting at the seams, and what you do to provide for our center really helps us. We are actually unique in the fact that many cities fund their own senior centers, but because we're older than our city, we are a nonprofit that raises its own funding. Our building that we're currently in was, um, is a manufactured building, which was in place in nineteen eighty-three. And so as our population has aged, our building has aged. We've had some unwelcome guests this year. We welcome everybody, but we don't welcome pests. And so we know that going further into our next year, we'll have lots of things to take care of, and we're looking forward to continue working with you, and we thank you so much for your help.
Thank you, Ellen. Are there any questions?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Ellen.
Next is the Elveroi Museum.
Good evening, Mayor Jim Richardson, Solvang City Council, and a hard-working staff. I'm Art Caslow. I'm a member of the Board of Directors of the Elveroi Museum. I'm attended here tonight by my dedicated board. I've got Lisa Peterson, Elizabeth Jensen, Dr. Harwood, Eric Gregerson. We're here en masse because we are requesting thirty thousand dollars, and this is less than ten percent of our operational budget. This thirty thousand dollars will likely be used to replace a heating and air conditioning unit at the Elveroi Museum in order to preserve and keep the lovely exhibits, as was alluded to by Joan, in good order. I believe all of you have received a list of our accomplishments and our program goals and objectives. Just to give you a few highlights, the Elveroi Museum welcomes over nineteen thousand visitors annually. It is completely staffed, other than our Executive Director, who's not able to attend tonight, Esther Jacobson Bates, who I think we consider is our Danish Ambassador to the Embassy here in the United States. She wasn't able to attend, but we have over sixty volunteers who contribute over three hundred and fifty hours a month at the Elveroi Museum. We do a lot of our own fundraising. Coming up next weekend is our Souls to Sundown event, and I appreciate your support for that as well, Mayor, and the attendance thereof. And we are very proud of being basically the repository for the Danish culture and archives for this town with a Danish name and a Spanish name county. So we're just more than a Danish named town. We do have a culture here, and the Elveroi Museum is dedicated to preserving that. We very much appreciate this, the support you've given to the Elveroi Museum in the past, and we are certainly very gracious to receive any of that thirty thousand dollars request for this fiscal year. And I can answer any questions you have about the Elveroi.
I don't see any question. I would like to, to comment, though, on your, on your, your soon-to-be mayor for a day.
Yes.
And to remind folks that that is going to be auctioned at this, at the sundown.
Yeah, that'll be live auction, item number one.
And it's been a great fundraiser. I would hope that everybody that goes vote, bids on the item, and we have a great response from that.
Well, thank you for your support. Are there any other questions?
Thank you, Art.
Thank you.
Next up is the Danish Days Foundation.
Hi, I'm Hans Brookholm. Brenda Anderson, we're both board members. Brenda happens to be chair. Mayor Richardson, City Council, thank you. I wish we were sitting around a great big table and have a few sandwiches around us and a beer, maybe a Nakavit? 'Cause that's what Danish Days is all about, celebrating our traditions. Now, we're asking for a lot of money, twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars, which is between fifteen and twenty percent of the whole budget. We also, last year, through your magnanimous help, got some money to start some stoves, and they will be installed this coming Danish Days. Stainless steel, work of the art, you know? And we appreciate that help. You won't have to look at all that tin. And four fifths of you are there every Danish Days, and we appreciate that, too. We're sorry that our Danish maid couldn't be here. She happens to be in Denmark. Which, that's good, too. She needs to know what Denmark is all about. Uh, let's see. Yeah, yeah, stoves are in order. We come every year to ask for help. But it is, in our opinion, Solvang's biggest Danish party that celebrates our traditions, not just the Danish traditions, but the Solvang Danish traditions. 'Cause I, I got hauled over the coals one year. Somebody from Santa Barbara News Press asked me, "What do you think about Abel Skevers and Medista Pulsar for breakfast?" And I said, "No self-respecting Dane would eat that." But a Solvang Dane does, and that's what we serve. And it must be popular, 'cause we get thousands of people coming through the lines. So if you can help us, we greatly appreciate it. Also, I haven't had dinner yet. I'd like to go, so if you have any questions, we'd love to answer them now.
Any questions? Thanks, Hans. Thanks, Brenda.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
And thank you for all your past support. It's gone to good benefit.
Actually, thank you for all being there to help us celebrate. It's, it's a great tradition.
Next up, San Andres Valley People Helping People.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Dean Paleus, Chief Executive Officer at People Helping People. Thank you for your past support, and thank you for the recommendation for funding this year. The question regarding overhead, our general administrative expense is one point six percent of our total expense, and our fundraising expense is six point two percent, for a total overhead of seven point eight percent. That was included in the audit that we sent in with our request. I'm not gonna review the entire request. I think we did a comprehensive, um, job in putting together the application. I'm very happy to answer questions. The other question, I believe, was what's the seventeen thousand dollars recommended as a percentage of our total budget? And our, we have about between five and six hundred thousand dollars in donated goods, so subtract that. The cash is one point two percent of our total budget, but of the basic needs budget, food, emergency solutions, healthcare, it's four percent of the basic needs budget. We did ask this year for additional funding. We are facing what I think is a crisis in our valley. Really, it's a national crisis. One would think that we know that people are aging quite rapidly. Some of us are aging quite rapidly right here, huh? Right here in place. And it just turns out to be that the San Andres Valley, for some reason, has the most, the fastest-growing volume of seniors in Santa Barbara County. And many of those seniors actually are in Solvang and in Buellton. And we are having a difficult time keeping up with the services for seniors. Seniors don't present just with the need for food. They present with multiple and complex issues. Frequently, there's a disabled person. There may be one, one of the spouses may have medical issues, can't afford the drugs that need to be purchased because of something we know now is called the donut hole, or other copayments. Maybe there's somebody with memory loss, they're having trouble with rent. The average income for seniors in our valley is somewhere around the neighborhood of twenty to twenty-two thousand dollars, so you can just think about what it costs to rent a place. And that's why we, we appreciate what we've had in the past, but that's why we came to you for additional funding. And you're not the only group that we went to for additional funding. We went to the Chumash, who actually did give us a small amount of funding to serve seniors. We're asking the county now to add some additional funding to our Human Services Commission funding to serve seniors. This problem is not going away. We've done a very poor job in setting aside money to meet this need, and part of our job is to advocate for those in need in our community. We'll continue to do that here. We did it in Buellton, and we're doing it with the county. And I'll just close by reading you a letter. Sometimes, we're not sure. We say we're, we're changing lives for the better. Sometimes, we don't hear too much from our, from our clients. We serve the clients, we follow up, and then, to some degree, they, they disappear. I received this on May sixteenth, this handwritten letter. "I would like to express my appreciation and respect for your staff at People Helping People. I volunteered there the first year you started the Domestic Violence Prevention Program as an advocate. I am now seventy years old and needed help with many issues, and your entire staff treated me with so much respect and kindness. They also knew exactly which services I needed and how to access them. When I volunteered there, I had a good job and continued to have steady work until I was sixty-seven years old. I became very ill, had two surgeries, and was on disability for one year, and on unemployment for one year, then on social security only for one year. It was not enough to live on, so I used all of my savings. When I ran out of money, I was so depressed, I was almost suicidal. I went to People Helping People, and your staff gave me hope the moment I walked in. I was connected to all the services I needed to stay afloat. I am so grateful and so very pleased that our little valley still has People Helping People, because it literally saved my life when I needed the help. Thank you." And I'll just give you your initials, F. H., Solvang resident and soon-to-be Golden Inn Village resident. So there is some help available, but it's become more and more difficult, and that's why we asked for additional funding. Happy to answer questions.
Would you like to plug, plug your next fundraising event on the twenty-fifth?
Oh, sure, sure. We have a San Andres Valley Polo Classic on the twenty-fifth of, uh, this month at Happy Canyon Vineyard in Piocho Ranch out in Happy Canyon. We're really looking forward to it. It's a big undertaking, but we've already sold out our VIP tickets. There are still some tickets available. Thanks for the mention. Appreciate it very much. It's our biggest fundraiser of the year.
It has a great turnout, and it's for a great cause, and it's great entertainment.
Really appreciate it. It is a fun event.
Thank you, Dean.
Thank you.
Uh, next is the Solvang Chamber of Commerce.
Hello, my name is Tracy Beard. I'm the Executive Director of the Solvang Chamber of Commerce. These are my board president next to me, Stacy Amrogati, and I have Lisa Mesa next to me here. And I have many other board members out, and probably all constituents of the chamber that are sitting in the audience right now. I thank you, everyone, for being here. The Chamber is asking for twenty thousand this year. We have never asked for a huge grant for economic vitality. Our goal is to enhance the economic vitality of the business in Solvang by supporting the generations of jobs, increasing capital investment, and retaining business assistance for our business community. The Chamber boasts in supporting the business through constant contacts, the website, our webinars. We are using additional media for the Chamber to support and notify about local business issues. Our vision is a China-ready program, and it is to partner with our Solvang Conference and Visitors Bureau and the Visit San Andres Valley and our local city of Solvang for a China-ready program, workshops for this community. The Chamber, and the, the Chamber has partnered with the San Andres Valley Local Star to create a local, um, comprehensive program for a newspaper that will reach out to the community for Asian visitors to advertise, to see the advertisement that our local, um, business owners have provided to them. The city seeks a million... The city seeks a million and a half visitors a year. We have almost, in Chinese visitors, I call Chinese delegate visitors, we have about fifteen hundred a week that come through this community. We are currently able to view, we want them to be able to view ads on cellular phones, on their computers when they come in. We want to help the tourists, we want to help the local business owners. We want to also help our Chamber with shop solving first with our local community. Our local community members need to shop here more locally. We need to put banners up, we need to shop in this area. Using social media, cellular, using holiday advertisements, so people are not leaving this business community. We also, the Chamber would like to do networking with our local residents more. And that means we have to advertise, and we need the money to advertise from you. The other thing is that we need to do a Union Pay. And Union Pay is a global business network, and we need to teach people to, how, how to put a, um, credit card that our, as I want to say, our local, as our visitors are coming in from China, that they can go shopping with, and that there's signs around. We're not working enough with the businesses. We work getting people here, but we don't teach them how to, how to shop is our biggest problem. We want to eat, shop, and play in Solvang. And that's the goal of the Chamber, is to keep the business going. We are the only chamber that receives no economic vitality from the city at this time. We receive no funding for anything, we are self-sufficient, and we work on a very small budget. And we need your help and support to keep this Chamber and this community growing very much. And we have shown very much this year a change within the Chamber. That budget that if we were to ask would be five point eight percent from the twenty thousand. If we are allowed the sixteen thousand, four hundred, it would be seven percent. And if it's ten thousand, it would be eleven percent. We have a great Solvang Third Wednesday program that Lisa's going to tell you about.
Thank you, guys, for, uh, giving us some time today. The Solvang Third Wednesday is in its eighth year. As you know, the committee is a hundred percent volunteer-based. We have six individuals that dedicate their time, uh, to the organization, and it's exclusively committed to bringing local visitors out to shop locally. Do you want me to wrap it up? That's okay. Um, I want to thank you, guys. We, we support local programs, Solvang Summer Concert Series, Midsummer Music, which is all starting this week, the Solvang Scarecrow Festival. And of course, we have sixty local businesses, um, that support and are our participants. Um, retail shops, restaurants, beer and wine tasting rooms, and individuals who provide professional services. Without the support of the city council and our local community, um, our small businesses simply would not survive. So your continued support is much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions we can answer for you?
Any questions? Nope. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, we thank you very much, and we do want to be that partner to the city.
Solvang Theater Fest.
Hello, council, staff. Uh, my name is John Matthews. I'm a board member of the Solvang Festival Theater, also known as Solvang Theater Fest. Um, we take both names now. But, um, we want to thank you for your past, uh, givings to our facility. Uh, it is, it is a, um, a truly a community asset. Um, it sits over there where everybody drives by and tourists come by and look at it even when it's not open. Um, and it's a beautiful place to see, and certainly is filled with, with, uh, beautiful live entertainment year in and year out. Um, it was built over forty years ago, uh, by the community, um, very quickly. And it has been what I call a home run, um, ever since. Um, just a tremendous success story. But when something is an outdoor facility as it is, and, um, it has, was built so quickly, it has, um, certain maintenance issues that really, um, um, come up. And it tends to kind of snowball on us. Um, and that's why we've been, um, approaching you in the last few years, and why we've, uh, increased our, our ask. We asked twenty thousand dollars this year, and you've agreed to give us fifteen, and we certainly are very thankful for that. Um, what has come up, um, in our need for this year is that we've become, we've known that the telephone poles that, um, support the lighting equipment have been challenged over the years. Um, we've really had them evaluated at the request of PCPA because of the safety issue. They have, um, staff climbing those poles all the time. Um, and the engineers that we've had look at it have warned us that they're reaching the end of their life. So they are still usable, um, they're safe now. But we have been given a window of time to, um, to remedy this growing problem. It's something that's, it's just, it's not going to go on and service, uh, the lighting equipment the way it has. So we've already put in around fourteen thousand dollars into just the investigation, um, of, of the poles and this, and this, the structural integrity. Um, so the funds that you're, um, um, giving us are going to go into the planning of how we're going to actually change out these poles, which is going to be a very difficult thing to do. Um, they're attached to the infrastructure of the seating bowl. Um, and once you touch that, uh, all the other problems that are associated with that come into play as well. So we're not just changing out a, a lighting system. Um, there's going to be, um, things about the, the seating area itself that are going to get, um, first of all, touched. And then we say, well, what can we do at that time? How can we enhance the theater in some way? We're going to be looking at that in the next year or so, and these funds are going to help us, uh, do that properly. We want to ask all questions and have all, um, answers available to those who are going to ask us why, what, and how we're doing, what we're going to have to do to that theater. So we thank you very much. Um, the fifteen thousand dollars is about twenty-two percent of our total revenue. And we really, again, thank you so much for the fifteen thousand dollars. And I'm more than willing to answer any questions that you might have.
Are there any questions? Seeing none. Thanks very much.
Can I just, one plug?
Sure.
On October twelfth, Clint Black will be in our theater. It is our fundraiser. Tickets go on sale June twenty-ninth. It will be a sellout.
They'll be gone June twenty-ninth.
Yeah, it's, um, and it is our fundraiser. So we, we produce the show, um, and so all the money's going to, uh, helping this theater continue.
Thank you for that.
Next is Animal Rescue Team.
Is there anybody here from the Animal Rescue Team? Seeing none. Onto the next.
Uh, the next is Rotary Club of the Saninaz Valley.
Mayor Richardson and council members. First thing I want to say is thank you for your donation of last year. It's the first year you've ever donated to the Saninaz Valley Rotary Club. And, um, we're very, very appreciative that you did that. As you know, the people in Rotary are all volunteers, just as many of you are. And, um, the Fourth of July, um, festival and fireworks show, we started twenty-three years ago. Without our club doing this, our valley, as far as we know it, would not have a fireworks show. We consider it a very, very good fireworks show. The show, actually, just the fireworks alone, cost us twenty-three thousand dollars. It's over a thousand dollars a minute. And we're very proud to do that. We know that it's probably one of the best fireworks shows on, on the central coast. We get a lot of people from out of town. We figure out of four or five thousand people, we get about two thousand people from out of town. This year, for the first time, we're selling tickets online. I happen to be the webmaster, so it's been a little challenge, but, uh, I like challenges. The percentage of what you may donate to us, uh, runs about twelve percent of our budget. And that's quite a bit, and we really appreciate it. I want to invite you all to the fireworks show. As you know, or may not know, it's our major fundraiser. In fact, most of the money that we give out every year to the valley all comes from that fireworks show. As I sat here, listening to the people so far, I counted up nine out of the fifteen entities that you're going to give money to, we donate to every year, pretty much. Um, you have two handouts up there. Our club has donated over a million dollars to this community since, um, we started in, in nineteen fifty-nine. And the fireworks show started in nineteen ninety-four. And actually, we've donated since then about eight hundred thousand of that million. So you can see what the fireworks show and festival, uh, does to infuse money into our club that we can turn right around and give back to the community. Uh, this year, we have given ten thousand dollars in scholarships to the high school students. Normally, our budget's between eight and ten thousand dollars. And, um, our overhead is very low. It's all volunteerism. Between myself and a number of the people in the club, it's a lot of work. We, uh, enjoy doing it, but we're sure relieved when it's over. You have any questions?
Questions? Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Uh, next is Saninaz Valley Fruit and Veggie Rescue.
Uh, good evening, uh, mayor and city council, um, and staff. I'm Terry Delaney. I'm the founder of Veggie Rescue, and, um, it's nice to be here. Thank you. I don't really have the numbers. Amy Derry Berry, our executive director, was supposed to be here this evening. She couldn't make it tonight, so I'm the fill-in guy. You're stuck with me. So I think we asked for about ten thousand, I believe. And, uh, I'm not quite sure. I haven't seen the numbers, to be honest with you. Uh, if that's the case, it'd probably be about fifteen percent of our budget, roughly. So I apologize. I wasn't prepared in that, for that, so. We truly appreciate your generosity in the past. It's been a big help for Veggie Rescue. Thank you. I want to also thank our generous farmers in the valley. Without them, Veggie Rescue wouldn't exist. Our volunteers, uh, that go out and glean the fields and redistribute the food in the community. I want to thank them, a great group of people. Also, all the people that work in our kitchens, in the schools, hospice, uh, senior centers, uh, rescue missions. They, they work hard, they don't get paid a lot. It's difficult work, and I refer to them as angels. And, uh, I want to thank them. Veggie Rescue is in its sixth year. Um, this year, we will exceed a half a million pounds of food that we've redirected here just in, in the valley, basically. Uh, we do make deliveries to Santa Barbara and a little bit in the Long Poak. We want to grow, but our focus is Saninaz Valley. If you put a dollar value to that, at a dollar thirty a pound, roughly, that's kind of the number we work with, that's over six hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we've saved our organizations in food costs. We don't really look at the numbers. What touches our hearts is the nutritional value that we're giving our seniors and children in the valley. That's what we're really most excited about. Year to date, uh, for this year, for Solvang, we've delivered about ten thousand pounds. Um, we had a lot of lettuce at the beginning of the year. It's very light. So I think as we go into the, the back half of the year, uh, we'll probably be in the twenty, thirty thousand pounds. Uh, every year is different. Uh, we're always trying to get more every year. So, uh, again, if you put a dollar value on that, that's another thirty, forty thousand dollars that we could save our local charities. Let's see, I'm just going through my notes here. Sorry about that. Let's see here. There is food insecurity in our, in our community. We, a lot of people don't see it. I think Dean referred to our, our seniors. We see it at the senior centers. Uh, we certainly see it at some of the schools. And, you know, Veggie Rescue, that's really our focus. We kind of focus on the bookends, the seniors and the children in our community. And, uh, we feel those are the, the groups that are at risk the most. I would like to, I just made a note earlier. If you would like to join us in a glean, we could set aside a, we glean every, every other Saturday with our volunteers. So we could do a city council glean where we could get you out at one of our local farms. You could actually glean. What you'll be amazed with is how, really, how talented our farmers are, the work they do when you stand in those fields, and there's thousands and thousands of heads of lettuce that, you know, that we have the opportunity to glean. So I guess I'll work through staff and do an imitation and come out and get your hands dirty. So, um, we do have a farm-to-table coming up in August in Solvang. I don't have all the details, but just sort of a, a heads up, and that's one of our fundraisers this year. Uh, let's see here. You know, you talk about water, our, our water situation. Well, if you kind of think about it, Veggie Rescue, in a way, is helping with that. You, you know, vegetables are what, ninety percent water? So if we don't plow them under, we put them at the best use and get them on the tables in our community, that's really a good way to save water, or at least use it in the proper manner. So I think that's something that, uh, that a lot of people overlook. I think that's it. Uh, thank you very much, and we look forward for another great year.
Could, could you tell us the names of the organizations that you contribute to? I think it's really important that folks understand those specific organizations because it's, you've done a wonderful job in my eyes.
Thank you. Well, locally here in San, in the Saninaz Valley, we deliver to the Solvang Senior Center, the Friendship House, the Solvang School. In Saninaz, it's the Charter School. In Buellton, it's the Buellton Senior Center. In Long Poak, it's the, uh, Bridge House, which is a homeless shelter. Uh, in Santa Barbara, we deliver to Salvation Army, the Rescue Mission, Path, the Sarah House, and Noah's Anchorage. Those are the groups that we deliver to in the area.
Can you talk about the changes that you made at Solvang School with your deliveries and the, and the meals that are fed to the kids?
You know, Bethany's done an amazing job. We're so lucky to have her.
Exactly.
I mean, she's, she's the engine there. Uh, we supply the vegetables. We look at it as that we're changing the way our children eat. And at a very young age, they're learning about nutrition and, you know, that carrots are really good. And in fact, they line up, we have an amazing farmer, Shoe, in the valley, and he's, uh, he's the owner of Garden of. And the kids line up, and they ask for Shoe's carrots. They also, uh, Bethany has a secret recipe with her, her macaroni and cheese. In the fall, we get a lot of butternut squash. And when you have a five-year-old or a six-year-old, it's kind of challenging to figure out how you're going to get them to eat butternut squash. So Bethany puts it in their macaroni and cheese, and they love it. So, you know, things, but Bethany won the Golden Carrot Award, and she was the only public school in America the year that she won it. I think it was two or three years ago. And, um, she does an amazing job, and they love her. I mean, it's great.
I, I saw her receive that award, and without a, without an individual, every individual in that auditorium stood, the kids from this size to the parents yelling and screaming, celebrating her.
Yeah.
She's really good.
Yeah, there's a great vibe in the kitchen, you know. It's, it's, we're very lucky.
Yeah. Thank you for your contribution.
Thank you.
Do you have a gleaning schedule?
I'm sorry?
You have a gleaning schedule?
Well, if you-
And you go online?
Yes, you go online. You can sign up. And, um, typically, it's every other Saturday, depending on weather and what the farmers have available. And, uh, it's fun. I mean, it's, it's, everyone's in the fields, we're talking about cooking and recipes, and a lot of people become friends by gleaning. We're talking about cooking and recipes, and a lot of people become friends by gleaning. You know, they've met each other there. Would love to have you. And then I'll work with staff, and we'll get you guys out in the field soon.
Hey, I picked strawberries as a kid. It's hard work.
Yeah. Well, thank you.
Thanks very much.
Appreciate it.
Solvang School Education Foundation.
Hi, thank you, guys, for letting us all be here and ask for funds from you guys. I'm Robyn Saritslev. I'm a board member of the Solvang School Education Foundation, DBA Solving Arts and Music, which is SAM. We are asking for four thousand dollars for program supplies and a kiln for ceramics to be used by all five-hundred-eighty-seven students at Solvang School. This next year, we're going to be welcoming Ballard School Junior High. They're going to be feeding into Solvang versus Los Lejos. We are an all-volunteer organization, and this grant is three percent of our one-hundred-and-thirty-six-thousand-dollar budget, and our overhead is six percent. Teacher wages are passed through to the school. We raise them for the art and music teachers, and then they pay the teachers. We are excited that Solvang School has hired a full-time art teacher this year. This is the first art teacher not funded by SAM in over ten years. She, the new teacher, will be designing curriculum for all teachers to integrate art projects into each of the subjects they teach. This will help drive home concepts to various learning styles. And Solvang School is also rolling out Project Lead the Way, a STEM program, in two thousand sixteen-seventeen. So as a fundraising arm for the school, we've been fundraising music and arts. We'll probably shift a little bit as they can pick up a little bit more of art and music in the future and also be funding their STEM projects as well. But that wouldn't be till two thousand seventeen-eighteen. Two thousand sixteen-seventeen will look the same as before. Solvang School and SAM are proud to offer students a curriculum rich in the arts, science, and mathematics, which all go hand-in-hand to fully educate today's youth. Thank you so much for your past support and for considering this request, and I want to invite you to come to one of our programs next year. We do a December kind of Christmas winter program every year, and then a May-spring thing every year, and our annual talent show, which is usually in April. And if you guys haven't been to our talent show, you're missing out. It is so much fun. The kids are amazing. It's about two hours, and about thirty kids participate from the school, and everything from music, singing and dancing. It's, it's really cool, and it really kind of shows what they've learned at school to be able to share with everybody. Thank you.
Are there any questions?
Thanks, Robyn.
Thank you very much.
Attedag Village.
Mayor Richardson, city council members and staff. I'm Chris Parker, the CEO up at Attedag Village, and I wanted to thank you for your consideration. We are looking at replacing a twenty-eight-year-old reach-in refrigerator up at Attedag Village that's on its last leg, so we're looking to replace that. A lot of you know all the services Attedag Village does for the community, but a lot of you don't know that not only do we do great care for the seniors in the, in the community, but we also provide one-hundred-and-eighty-thousand meals for Attedag Village residents. We provide another twelve-thousand meals for Meals on Wheels a year, another four-thousand meals for the senior center every year. We've been doing Meals on Wheels for the past forty years, and the senior center for the past twenty-five years. We also do all the meals for Cottage Hospital. We are doing those at cost or less on a regular basis, depending on what goes on specifically with Meals on Wheels. And then this summer, we are rolling out what's called Attedag at Home. We're actually going to go and take it a step farther than Meals on Wheels. I'm going to go out and going to be supporting those seniors within their homes that are less fortunate, unable to move into, into a senior retirement community, be able to provide some support for them. When you look at this compared to our gross revenue, our budget, depending on how you look at it, the Attedag Home, it's about six percent. When you look at Attedag Village, it's less than one percent. Still questions?
Any questions?
Thank you, Chris.
Greetings, Mayor, Council, and City Staff. Thank you for this opportunity to ask for assistance for the wilding. As of August, we'll have been here in Solvang for three years, and we're loving our home, both the actual location and being part of this community. And we've been doing different things in this space and have learned what works really well and maybe what needs some tweaks. And one of the things that we've really evolved into and love are these community art shows that we offer in our Barbara Goodall Education Center. We feel we've been getting more and more interest and demand in them. We rotate through them about every two months, so in a year's time, we're able to do shows with about six different groups. And some of the groups here have already had shows with us, like Attedag Village, Friendship House, third graders throughout the valley. So this grant for fifteen hundred dollars would kind of help the groups and us as well be offer, be able to offer these shows for the Solvang-based community groups, like the Solvang Senior Center, which is already on our books. We'll be working hopefully with Attedag Village early next year, Solvang Schools, and this can help with both art supplies, with hosting the receptions. The receptions are such an important time for the families and friends of, whether it's the young students who maybe want to get into art and are so excited to see their art piece in a nice space in a museum, or an elderly person in their twilight years who does art because it helps them, but then has the added bonus of, again, it ends up in a space where many people can enjoy it, and they're surrounded by their family, and it's a real highlight for them to be able to experience that. So this grant would definitely help not just us, but the other groups as, as well. If I'll just mention a few other things about the museum while I'm here. Oh, and by the way, that fifteen hundred dollars is just like a point-three percent of our operating budget, so it's, it's minor from that perspective, but it would have a lot of impact. We're right in the middle this week of installing our newest exhibition, which is a juried show of artwork all about California's national parks. We had forty-one artists from five different states that got juried in, including a lot of local artists. It's amazing. And Friday, I want to invite everybody, everybody in the whole room, to our opening, which is at five-thirty to seven-thirty. And besides the artists being there and award ceremony for them, we also have official representation from the Channel Islands National Park. So they're going to be sending a delegation to us, and it includes a top national junior ranger. Yes, they have such a thing, and he's that active that he's considered literally a top national junior ranger. So I think it'd be really fun for him to meet all of our community. We have a junior photography show this summer that we're going to be doing. It's our first time specifically doing that. That included a lot of local representation from the valley. We had sixty-five entries for our first time out. So I think, given how busy kids are, that was a really great and exciting thing for them, and that should be growing. And then we're also working on a new mural project. So a new permanent thing for the museum will be a Valley Oak Habitat mural done by local artist John Iwerx that we're really excited about, and something I think that school kids and other groups are really going to enjoy learning visually about our local environment and our Valley Oaks, which, as we all know, aren't getting any younger and are not growing a lot these days. Are there any questions?
I see none. Thank you, Stacy, very much.
Thank you.
San Andres Valley Botanic Garden.
Mayor Richardson, city council staff. My name is Steve Scholes. I'm a board member for the San Andres Valley Botanic Garden. We were started ten years ago when Parks and Rec came to us and said they needed a site for passive recreation in the San Andres Valley. And so we are located at the west end of Riverview Park in Buellton. Our, the plants there are primarily local natives. We have a few from south of the San Andres Valley mountain range and a few from the Sierras, such as our, some poppies, some fire poppies, which are native there. We're asking for a thousand dollars, which is approximately two percent of our budget. The only overhead we have is the shade and canopy from the trees we planted ten years ago. Thank you for your consideration.
You're, you're not only a board member, but you're one of the hardest-working guys there, aren't you?
Um, yes.
You are, yeah. Admit it, admit it.
I'm there a lot.
You are.
I, I enjoy playing in the dirt, and it reminds me of my childhood.
Well, it's great to see you. Are there any questions? Thanks very much.
And last but not least, the Valley Wind Ensemble.
Good evening, Mayor Richardson, city council members and staff and public. I'm Felix Fisher. I'm the chair of the board for the Valley Wind Ensemble this year. The Valley Wind Ensemble is in its twenty-fifth year. This is our silver anniversary. Every year, we present a number of concerts. Typically, we have two major concerts in the year, the Fourth of July, and then a band concert in the summer at the gazebo, which just happened last week, as a matter of fact, on the fifth. We are asking for a thousand dollars this year, which is just under twelve percent of our overall budget. As most of you know, the funding for groups such as ours has been somewhat sparse. In the past year, unfortunately, we have lost several of our major donors, and by major donors, I mean donors that provided us with two-hundred-and-fifty dollars or more in donations a year. We are running into the same situation that many organizations are, where our constituents are growing older and they do pass away. We are very pleased with the funding that the city was able to give us last year. It significantly helps us in our ability to provide good music for the community. All of the members of the Valley Wind Ensemble are amateur artists, and we very much love to play and provide music for the valley. If there are any questions concerning the Wind Ensemble, we'd be happy to answer them. Our next concert, of course, is with the Fourth of July. We will be playing the hour before the parade between ten and eleven, and we hope to see you all there for some good patriotic music.
Are there any questions? I just want to say thank you for your, for your participation in the valley all these years. It's a wonderful organization you have, and it's, it's great music.
Thank you very much. That's what we were hoping for.
And I'd just like to make a comment for Felix. A lot of people don't know Felix, but he is probably one of the hardest-working volunteers in the San Andres Valley. Did you make it home on Saturday afternoon with everything from the rotary? Yes, I saw, I did see you pull off to the side of the road and restack something. But if you, if you, if you need something done and you can find Felix, Felix will probably ninety-nine percent of the time, if he can work it into his schedule, he will be there to help. He's, he's an outstanding, one of our outstanding volunteers in the valley.
Thank you. And that was the last presentation?
Right, I think now we'll move into the staff report for this item.
Are we going into the budget staff report? Is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
We have one speaker slip. It was Fred Kovell for item seven. Did you want to speak now, Fred?
I'd love to. Mayor and city council, when I look at the totals on the sheet, I request for two-hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand, plus or minus a little bit, and then another seven-hundred-thousand for the SCVB, for a grand total of nine-hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand dollars. Now, in the past, you have talked about revenue diversification. For your consideration, this is a good opportunity to get that started. And how can you do that? You can do that by taking a portion of this nine-hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand dollars, and you can use it for development of a smokeless industry, the start of it. And how will you do that? You've heard this before from me, and that is creating the environment for a tech center to provide STEM education for our kids in school, for anyone, for that matter, for entrepreneurs, for investors, for people that want to start a new revenue stream in this city. So let's focus on STEM. Let's take some money and start putting it away, and let's start having a plan developed for doing this. Some of the things you can do, invest in high-speed internet for the residents. You might want to talk to Long Poak to see how their system is working, how it's progressed, how much it's used. What's the payback? How about a hot Wi-Fi hotspot for the tourists that covers a portion of the city? Maybe you just start out with Copenhagen for the three or four blocks, and just Wi-Fi that and get it started. Those are the kind of things that need us to, to diversify. And is this golden apple going to exist forever? Or will some other town take over our spot eventually? So we really need to start thinking those, along those lines.
Thank you, Fred. Mr., before we go into agenda item eight, is there any comments on seven, on the presentations?
Sure.
Then on to, on to item, oh, sorry, Charlie, Charlie. You, yeah, you do have a speaker thing. Would you like to speak, please?
First of all, Mr. Mayor, members of city council, I, first of all, I would like to thank you for reappointing me to the County Library Advisory Committee for the coming year. We will be working on possible ballot measures to vote on in two thousand eighteen. That should alleviate some of the funding problems for the libraries in Santa Barbara County. That's our goal, at least. Before I start, I'd like to ask people here tonight that are supporting the library to please stand so that the council can see. Right, thanks. Thanks very much. The budget for the coming year sets the city contribution to the library at eighty-eight-thousand. This is the fourth year in a row that there has been no increase in the allocation. Expenses for the library have increased each year, and the reserves are disappearing. The next step will be to close the doors on days other than Sunday and Monday. I know that the city council is concerned with the image of the city of Solvang. You should know that the library reflects the image of the city just as much as many other things that you have invested in, such as sidewalks, parks, restrooms. An investment in the library, I think, is overdue. It is not only for visitors that this investment is important, but also for the community. You have three million dollars in revenue from the TOT each year. It was passed in part thanks to library volunteers that went from door to door to campaign for the bedtacks. It seems to me that an increase of fifty thousand dollars is a small fraction of the amount brought in by the TOT, but it would be very, a very important resource for the library. With that money, we would not only be able to keep the library open for thirty-six hours a week, we would also be able to have a full-time supervisor once again. Splitting our supervisor with Buellton for the past year was an experiment that has not been completely successful. And if anybody could have made it work, it would have been Kerry. She's a very hard worker, and it has, it hasn't, you know, it's been okay, but it's just not, just not ideal in any sense of the word. Programs and service to the community have suffered some. Please consider very seriously granting the request for one-hundred-and-thirty-eight-thousand in the application from the Zone One Supervisor on behalf of the Solvang Library. This would amount to an increase of approximately twelve-thousand-five-hundred per year over the four years that there has been no increase. Perhaps the library should be, should actually be part of the city budget, instead of being grouped with miscellaneous nonprofits requesting funding from the city's discretionary funds. It would, it would then appear that the library was funded according to the needs of the city to provide a service, rather than have to apply for funding when it actually is not a nonprofit organization at all. I hope that you think that the library is important, as important as you have said it is, and as you have shown in years past by your- it is, and as you have shown in years past by your contributions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Shirley. Any comments? With that, then, we can go to item eight.
Item Eight, Preliminary Budget Hearing.
Staff report. This is a time, if you don't want to watch the budget process, this might be the time you want to leave. We'd rather you stay and see what we go through, because we do enjoy having you. But if you'd like to leave, please take this opportunity.
Does anybody know how the basketball game is played?
I don't know. It's on Channel Three. So he might have it. We're not...
Sorry?
Third time in a row.
Are we paying for this?
Okay, all right, good.
Is that video or audio, or both?
Yeah, there's other programming on.
Other programming?
Yeah.
Well, we fall behind Lumpo, you know, in priority?
Yeah, there's other things on. We're just x'ed out.
Okay, we can start the budget presentation.
Good evening, once again, Mayor Richardson, members of the City Council. In your packet is the staff report outlining a bunch of highlighted items for the upcoming budget for 1617, but I'm going to go through a presentation, and you have a copy of the dais. So tonight, I'm going to be talking about several areas. I'm going to give you an overview of the budget. We're going to talk specifically about the general fund, capital projects. We will get back to the agency requests, in addition to talking about the water fund and the wastewater fund. This slide here presents a budget overview of our major funds: general fund, water fund, wastewater, and transit. The top chart gives you an estimate of revenues and expenses and the resulting balance at the end of fiscal year 1617. As you'll notice, both the general fund, the water fund, and the wastewater fund, actually all funds, are going to end in a deficit, but for various reasons. I've added a separate chart to show you that the general fund is really using reserves, and this was a result of a council action a few meetings ago, where we've decided to utilize a portion of the reserves for a one-time allocation to the water fund for the Table A water. So the bottom chart shows you what our fund situation would look like if we were not going to utilize those reserves as a one-time action. So in reality, the general fund would end up in a positive balance of $186,000. The water fund would end up in a worse balance, which is why the decision was made to use the general fund, and then the water fund and transit fund would be unchanged. This next slide, I was just trying to represent a little bit about the general fund. If you look at the green bars, those represent the revenues over the past 1415, what we estimate where we're going to come in 1516, and then what we estimate the revenues to be for 1617. The red bar is the expenses, and then the light blue bar is where we think the balance will be for 1617 in each year, and then the unassigned fund balance. So that's basically your reserves, and where we think the reserves is going to end up for each year. So you notice in 1415, our unassigned or available fund balance was about $4.8 million. We think in 1516, it's going to increase to about $5.4 million, but then again, using this one-time reserves for the Table A water is going to decrease that overall unassigned fund balance just slightly. Overall, we're looking at about a 5% increase in revenues for 1617. The biggest increase is really going to be in the transit occupancy taxes. For 1516, although we budgeted about $3.5 million, we're thinking we're going to come in a little closer to between $3.8 and $4 million. In sales tax, we're not projecting any increase in fiscal year 1617. Brad and I have kind of evaluated our historical results, where we are right now, and then also had discussions with our sales tax advisors, and so we're holding that at the same amount of $1.1 million. We do anticipate property and other taxes going up just slightly, based on information we received from the Santa Barbara County Assessors Office. And then our charges for services, those are going down slightly, just because we're not doing as many of the shared programs that we used to with Beelton Recreation. We're focusing more on the individual specialty camps during the summer, rather than the overall camp program, now that Beelton's doing it on their own. So that's what our top revenues look like for fiscal year 1617. This graph is an example of TOT and sales tax revenues, actuals, and projections. So you'll notice, TOT has gone steadily up. You'll see a dip in 1516, only because that was our original budget projection, but as I mentioned, we're looking at actually coming closer to about $3.8 to $4 million for 1516, and then in 1617, we're looking at about $3.9. And again, the sales tax number in red, pretty much showing a flat or very little increase over the past few years. Some of the additional general fund expenses that I'll be talking about are salaries and benefits, our law enforcement services, workers' compensation, our IT costs, some capital projects that we're going to be doing this year, agency requests, and then the Solvang Conference and Visitors Bureau. So salaries and benefits represents about 32.5% of the general fund expenses overall. In that category, we have our salaries, our taxes, the cafeteria plan. We've now separated out retiree costs. They used to be lumped under a category, under council activities. They now have their own program, so we can identify exactly what those costs are. In the budget, there's two line items. One is for the ongoing cost of retiree benefits. That would be medical, dental, and life in some cases, depending on when the retiree retired. And then the other portion is for the other post-employment benefit trust. So as you may recall, the council voted to participate in the trust offered by CalPERS, and so we now have a portion of funds that we're going to be directing each year to pre-fund retiree benefits. One of the issues we have is that liability is about $2.9 million, but by pre-funding these benefits, we can bring that liability down. And eventually, as that money increases in the trust, we can use that to pay a portion of the ongoing costs each year. Our retirement costs, from CalPERS, we get the projection of what they're going to be for the next year, and we're looking at our current cost right now. This year was 18.696% of payroll, and that's prior to any employee contributions. Right now, they're contributing 4%. In 1617, our normal cost is going to be 17.086%. It's decreasing slightly, because we chose to pay off that side fund back in 201415. And then we also have, as we've had turnover in the past year, and we bring on new employees, they become part of the Pepper system. They're no longer classic members, if you will, in the CalPERS system. So the Pepper employees, as we call them, are now required to contribute half of their retirement cost. And so they're paying 6.5%, and the city pays about 6.73%. So significantly lower than the percentage for older employees that have been with the city longer. This is a chart I projected out. CalPERS provides us figures of where we think these costs are going to go over the next five years. So you can see we're increasing almost 3% between 1617 and 2122, and that's also, it's expressed as a percentage of payroll, and, excuse me, and that's prior to any employee contributions. So as I mentioned, right now, for 1516, if you look, the employees are contributing 4%, so that brings our cost down for 1516, and it will continue going forward. But this is just an overall look at what those costs are going to be going forward. For law enforcement, we contract out with the Santa Barbara County Sheriff's Department. They represent about 20% of our general fund expenses. We anticipate the actual cost going up by 2%. They've just recently been working on their contract, but we've already included that in the estimated budget. What happened was, when we met with them prior to the 1516 fiscal year, we were anticipating those costs would go up 5%, and so we built that into the budget for 1516. And they didn't conclude their negotiations, so our costs were actually the same as in 1415. And so now, in the preliminary budget, we included that same 5%, but now it looks like those costs are going to go up 2% now, another 2% later in the year, so we'll be covered for that potential 4% increase for the 1617 year. And just want to highlight that the Community Resources Deputy is a separate line item in the budget. We receive a grant for a portion of that cost, about $100,000, and so we pay the remainder of that, which is about $55,000, and in the budget. Workers' compensation, our premium is actually going up 9.4% this year. It's based on a rolling five-year period. So our actual premium cost from the JPIA, our insurance, would be $174,000. However, because we have closed out some prior year claims, they've got some refunds that are due to the city, and they apply those to the actual premium cost. So our actual cost for the year will be $91,388. But if they were evaluating and you were strictly looking at the premiums, those premiums have been going up. I'm proud to say that we haven't had a new claim in over 240 days, knock on wood, and we've been working very hard to try and reduce and settle some of the outstanding claims to lower that cost for the city going forward. Some of the strategies are city wellness program. We're also going to be rolling out a safety program. We are working with employees that are out to do a return-to-work program so we can bring them back sooner. We have a nurse hotline, so if anybody's injured, they call the nurse hotline, and we try to do some triage. We continue to collaborate with the JPIA to, again, settle and complete and close out some of our outstanding claims. We partner with the Beelton Medical Center for treatment, and then again, we have gone over 240 days without a new claim. For general fund expenses for IT costs, so we have compartmentalized our overall IT costs into three categories. One is computer support. This is really the ongoing maintenance and support costs for all of our systems. I've listed some of them there. One of them is our financial system. We have Laserfish. We have a new GIS system, the email archiving system, which we implemented in the prior year, and IT support. That's our contracted IT provider, and there was no increase on that for the prior year. So that support cost, as you'll see on the next chart I'll show you, hasn't gone up too much in the past few years, but it is a lot, because we have so many systems that require ongoing maintenance and support. In our software and website category, that's for website hosting. We anticipate getting a new module in our financial system for Parks and Rec in the upcoming year that will facilitate better online payment registrations. And then we're also implementing a new accounts-receivable module. That's the later version that will help facilitate better billing and statements for accounts receivable. In computer equipment, that category is reserved for miscellaneous replacement parts. We've got some batteries that are backups that are dying and need to be replaced, and then desktop replacements. So we implemented a computer replacement cycle. We're replacing three machines in the upcoming year that are running Windows XP and are no longer supported. So that's part of our ongoing cost, to update new machines every four to five years, depending on the need in the system. This is a chart that just shows you what those costs are for the general fund. So again, the computer support category has gone up slightly, because we've implemented a new GIS system in Public Works. We have software and website. Last year, if you recall, we implemented the new website, and so that budget was greater. Now that we've implemented that, we're just hosting, and then for our computer equipment. We have a lot of capital projects coming up next year. This is a list. I'm not going to read through all of them, but you'll see the largest one at the top is the $810,000 that we're transferring out to the water fund for the purchase of that water. Other projects include upgrades and updates at the Hans Christian Anderson Park, some new landscape and drought-tolerant landscape at Solvang Park, and the city common areas, some road work that's also in conjunction with Measure A funding. So we have a variety of capital projects that are one-time costs for the upcoming year. This table, I've already provided to you as a handout, but this lists all of the agencies, what they received in 1516, what their request is, and what they're proposing for the next fiscal year. The Conference and Visitors Bureau, this chart also shows what they received in 1415, 1516, their request, and what the Finance Subcommittee proposed for the 1617 fiscal year. This chart presents a history of 10 years of the funding that the SCVB has received, and I'm showing a proposed amount for 201617. We do plan to carry forward some money from the 1516 that was allocated for one of the projects, which was the Vets Hall Painting Lit Abeyment and Window Replacement Project. That's ongoing, and we don't anticipate it'll be finished in the current fiscal year. Preliminary estimates, we're going to need to carry forward about $61,000 of funding. That may change, depending on the progress, and so we should have a better number by the final budget. But that project, again, was started in the current fiscal year and will overlap, so we're going to carry forward some money for that. In our capital projects fund, we're anticipating additional work on the Alice Al Bridge Seismic Retrofit Project and the Bicycle Podestium Project over the Alamo Pantato Creek. We do get reimbursed a certain amount of funding for the Bridge Seismic Retrofit Project, so we don't anticipate a huge outlet of cost to the city, but that's just showing you what the anticipated project would be. Now, looking at the water fund, this is another similar graph to what I showed you with the general fund here. Revenues in green, expenses in red, and then you'll notice the balance is dipping below for 1516 and 1617. And then the unassigned fund balance, if you'll notice, is going from about $2.4 million down to about $881,000. I know I've come to you each year claiming there are dire issues with the water fund, and we've managed to pull it out every year, but I still am concerned. And I think this year, we are doing the water and rate studies, so we'll be talking about that, but that will help as we go forward in planning for the future fiscal issues with the water fund. We're projecting the budget deficit of $127,536. Remember, that would be much greater if the general fund were not providing the Table A water money. We continue work on the River and Upland Wells Project, but the council, based on council direction, we've scaled that back, and we have estimated costs for additional purchased water as part of that water fund budget. This chart just gives you an example of the revenues that come in. The majority of the water revenues are fixed costs. This is what we're anticipating for the next year. So one thing that we're doing differently as we go forward in the new fiscal year is separating out the revenue from the fixed versus the variable consumption cost, so we can better track that going forward. So this is how we've estimated it for 1617. Terms of water fund expenses, as you can see, our largest cost is really the state water payment, although we are paying about $300,000 less in the upcoming year, basically because of the bond repayment schedule. We have a one-year, slightly smaller payment, based on the way they calculated that out. But we do plan to purchase additional water, and so our overall cost is about $3.6 million. Similar chart in the wastewater fund. They have a much healthier unassigned fund balance there. You can see upwards of $3.5 million. It'll be slightly decreasing to about $3.4 million. So they're in a much better situation, although they are ending up in a deficit this year. You do have the reserves to fund that. One thing you'll notice, though, for this year, I'm going to talk about, is the water fund had been paying off their loan to the wastewater fund, and so they were bringing in revenue of about $286,000. In fiscal year 1617, we're paying that loan off, so you're only going to receive about $22,000, and the wastewater fund had been using that revenue. And so, again, I think this is where the rate study is going to be helpful to evaluate how to get that balance back to zero. One other comment is that we are reimbursed by the San Yves Community Services District for the use of its... for the use of its, for the use of the wastewater treatment plant, and they also cover a portion of the capital expenses. We do assess them a monthly cost for the use of the plant, and then we true-up at the end of the fiscal year. We don't have as many planned capital expenses for the wastewater treatment plant in 15, 16, so that's why we're anticipating a little bit less revenue in 16, 17. This is just a chart showing you basically the largest portion of our revenues coming from the, from the revenue of the wastewater, and then the connection fees as well, and then the reimbursement from the Community Services District. Our expenses, a large portion of the expenses are the salaries and benefits, maintenance operations, and then the finance cost and depreciation of the plant. Here's some upcoming projects that we have planned for the Water and Wastewater Fund. They're going to do a Reservoir 2 repair project, and this was discussed, I think, by Matt at one of our previous council meetings. You'll notice that the cost for the Upland and River Wells is much lower than anticipated in, you know, in previous discussions based on council direction. We are going to do the water and sewer rate study, and then wastewater treatment plant grading and drainage improvements, and some SCADA upgrades for a total of about $715,000. So in summary, some things we're going to be looking at ahead is the calpers. As I mentioned, those employer contributions are just going to keep growing. We do plan to do the water and wastewater rate study, so I think that'll be valuable as we look forward to how we're going to fund some of the projects in the water fund and try and get rid of those deficits. We potentially have some adjustments to the final budget. We know some changes we need to make in the transit program, and then we may adjust some of the capital projects depending on how much we get done, for example, with the Vets Hall project. So you may see a few minor adjustments at the final budget, and I'll identify those. And that concludes my staff report. I'm available if you have any questions.
Are there any questions to the staff report?
I have one question, probably in the future, that doesn't really have anything to do with the budgeting right now. But I noticed the CSD is in the process of annexing some major areas out in the San Ynez area to bring additional properties that are currently susceptible to failure with their septic systems, and how that is going to affect our budgeting, considering that they'll be sending more affluent down their system to our plant. I'm assuming it's going to be, A, it's going to cost us more to treat the material because we're going to have more material to treat, but they will be covering their own treatment, or the cost of the treatment of their additional wastewater? Is that be correct?
Yes, they pay based on their flow.
Okay.
Are there any other questions? Seeing none, then we'll go to the public for comment. I have no speaker slips. Does anybody wish to comment? Tracy?
Yeah, I was going to say, we didn't include the SCVB in the agency request because we were trying to separate that out, so this would be the time for the SCVB to give their presentation.
I think I am going to withdraw at this time, since it could possibility.
I don't know if the council's taken action after this, so it's up to the attorney. Can he listen into their presentation?
Well, now would be a good time just to discuss what the plan is, and I'm losing my voice. So if you could go over the, kind of, the schedule we thought about dealing with the conflict.
So we thought we would give the SCVB a chance to present, and then when the public comment's done, we'll bring it back to the council, and we thought we would start with the SCVB because we've got one council member who needs to recuse, and then work on the agencies with, I think there was one of those that they, that two of you need to recuse on. I mean, that's, that may just make it a little easier than bouncing back and forth.
So I think then the best thing to do, just so we don't play musical chairs quite so much as we did last year, it would be to ask if there's anybody else in the public wants to make comments so that Councilmember Skid can hear that. And then if there are no others, then he can leave before this part of the presentation.
Is that acceptable?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, right. Then take it away.
All right. Well, thank you for the opportunity to also speak in front of Councilman Skid for this evening. With me here, I'm Executive Director of the Solvang CVB, and with me are my board members, Susan Williams, with wandering dog, our CFO, and also Dr. Ken Harwood, our honorary board member as well. And my dedicated staff was here, but I let them go home. So thank you for Brenda and Sarah. The Solvang CVB is your marketing agency, whose sole mission is to drive visitor desire and demand for your number-one economic industry, tourism. Now, we do this through key partnerships with local businesses, regional marketing agencies, and international representation, by measured and proactive advertising, promotions, and research, through PR and social media outreach, at trade shows, the visitor center, and events, all to enhance the quality of life for Solvang residents. And by the way, that's with over a $1,400 tax savings per household each year from that. We are a very proud member of this community. So we thank you for reinvesting in the CVB every year. It's working. TOT collections and occupancy is at an all-time record high. Being ahead of the curve and not just keeping up with it has really helped elevate Solvang's profile and our market share. We plan on keeping the momentum going and moving ahead. So we're going to China this year. I don't know if I've mentioned that. Taking Solvang to the country that has increased visitation to California by over 35% in one year. That is an obscene number. It is so fantastic. We've been wooing the Asian Pacific visitors for years. We're going to go to them, just like when we went to Denmark prior to our centennial celebration, which showed immediate results. We're partnering with the Solvang Chamber, as Tracy Beard mentioned to you earlier, on a China-ready workshop this fall, so we can all become more all-welcoming. The exciting opportunity has actually been entering the meetings industry, so this is where we can show the most progress. Our focus is on midweek, off-season, smaller groups that spend the night, just right-sized for Solvang. We will benchmark our progress and help the hotels and retail where they need it the most. We respectfully ask for our full budget as requested in our marketing plan. 88% of our total, 88% of what you're granting is, is part of our total. The rest is out of public and some other private funds. 68% of that goes toward marketing, with 32% in operations. Our budget shows a modest 5% increase over last year to accommodate for the cost of living, minimum wage increases, and our new sales efforts. So we want to thank you, City Council, for your vote of confidence in us, and also for our future and chance for our board members. Did you want to say anything? Susan?
You've got a long night ahead of you, so I think Tracy said it all, and we appreciate the inspiration.
Thank you for the time to present, and thank you, staff.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the audience that wishes to speak? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council for direction and...
Yeah, I just want to reiterate, before we start doing the musical chairs that we are going to have to do, that what we're trying to do is maximize the participation level of each and every council member. So when, I'll just use Councilmember Skid as an example, because he will be declaring conflict on the SCVB, and I believe that...
The Adirondack.
The Adirondack. So what that means is, while he's not in the room, the council members who are not conflicted will have to make what's a final decision on that, because if we bring Councilmembers Skid back in, and then we restart up the discussion on the SCVB or the Adirondack, as in, well, gee, we can fund this other thing by taking, you know, $5,000 from what we were going to give to the SCVB, then we've fouled it up. And so we can't do it. So everyone has to be committed that by separating these out, so that the council members who do have some conflicts can participate on the rest of the budget, we just can't revisit those parts.
All right. With that, those that are recusing themselves for the first portion, which will be the CVB?
Yes.
Yes, okay. You may, you may leave. So we're going to be discussing the budget with the primary emphasis on, on the agency request, so that the, so that the budget is balanced at that point, no? Okay. So the first, the first item is the SCVB. Is the council satisfied with the, the grant requests that we've donated?
No.
All right, discussion.
Yes. I think we're seeing that what they're doing is working. TOT is up significantly, 10%, 11%, 11%, I think, through the, through the, through the most recent quarter. And to cut the grant or the revenue, whatever, by $35,000, which is 5%, is ridiculous. I would like to see, I would like to see the, I'd like to see the full 735. And especially because of this outreach into China. This is going to cost some money, but I think it's a huge, could be something huge, great moneymaker for the, for the city, for, for our merchants, for continued funding of everybody else.
Are there any comments?
I think part of that recommendation was, well, actually, we didn't cut that, cut, because I think last year it was $700,000 that we awarded, so it'd be consistent with last year. But in part, it was the recommendation to bring it down a little bit was based on the request from the Chamber of Commerce. And so we want to give them their, their own independent little chunk when they're kind of working together in a way, or they serve the same purpose.
If we do indeed hit 400,000, or, I'm sorry, 4 million on, on TOT, I keep looking at that 20%. 20% is 800,000. And, and if we look that, look at that rationale, that, this is promotion, you take the 735 of the request, you put another 20,000 of the chamber, the combined chamber, it barely gets up to 750. It's short of that 20%, 20% of TOT that, that I feel should go into promotion. Heck, you can even throw Elverhoe in, and you're still short.
So where would you suggest that we...
I'd like to see 735.
Where would, where are we going to get to 35,000?
I think, I think we have some opportunities as, as we go through.
We also...
I don't, I don't want to cut our moneymaker. I do not want to, I do not want to see the China, China deal get cut short. This is where the money comes in from. It's a mistake to cut it.
In, in reality, we're not cutting. We're just going ahead with the same as we gave last year.
Well, it's, you know, there, there are opportunities, and so I, it would have to cut somewhere else. You know, we, a couple of years ago, we did give that 735, so we, there's precedence for that. Last year, we basically went with their requests, I believe. Let me, okay, that's the request. Yeah, actually, we dropped it down.
I might, maybe I could interject for a second there. If you, it was the first or second slide Sandra showed you that if you take out the one-time $810,000 payment, you've got about $186,835 that would be revenue over expense. So if you just kind of pull that out of the budget as a one-time expense that you had previously approved, you have about $186,000 in the next fiscal year revenue. So you, so I guess where to come from that, if you're trying to balance that piece of it, that would be the potential area for that.
My, my, my personal feeling is if, if we put it at the 735, we make sure they get over to China, the problem's going to take care of itself. There's your 35,000 right there that we can't figure out where, it'll be brought in. It'll come in as TOT. It'll come in as sales tax. That, that is not being projected right now. Problem solved.
So how many, how many rooms do we have to fill to break even, if it's, what, 12% on the, on the tax?
It depends on, depends on room costs.
I tend to agree with Hans. I think the SCVB is the engine that makes things be allowed to happen in this community. It raises, it helps raises the funds. I do not understand why our sales tax is so flat. Can anybody explain that to me? Sandra?
You know, I don't really have an answer to that in terms of... I, I don't have an answer in terms of why it's flat. I mean, we kind of look at historical. We look at what we've done quarter over quarter. And again, we met with the Muni Sales Tax Advisors to kind of get a best estimate. So, I mean, we may come in over, but I'd rather be a little more conservative, given that that's also been their approach also in terms of conservative numbers for the sales tax, so...
Do we not have things in our stores that people want to buy?
It, yeah, there, there are a lot of different components to the sales tax. And, you know, it, it could have, have to do with local shopping, grocery store type, type stuff, or drugstores.
Construction, construction materials, those types of things, yeah.
Things like that. So, you know, you can't, unless you, unless we really look at this breakdown, and even then, it's difficult to tell exactly where, where it all hits.
Well, I would be in favor of giving their, what they have asked for, 735,000, knowing that we are taking some of that $186,000 to cover that.
That $186,000 is, is smoke and mirrors.
It's all smoke and mirrors, Mayor.
And because, because we did take it out of the general fund, funds. And I, of course, voted against that. I wanted to stay with taking the money out of the water fund or generate it another way besides taking it from the general fund. What you, are you, are you, is there anybody suggesting a motion?
I will, I will make a motion that we fund the, the Visitors Bureau at 735.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Deuce?
Yes.
Jamison?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
No.
Mayor Richardson?
No. Motion failed. Is there any more discussion?
I think you've made a huge mistake. This is going to cost.
So we, we keep the, the CVB grant at 700,000?
Right, right now, you just have one motion that failed, and you have a recommendation.
Right. That's why I ask, is there another motion?
Okay, let's play Let's Make a Deal. What about 725,000? Bring it down by 10,000.
Is there a second to that? Is there a second to that motion?
I was, I'm thinking like seven oh five.
I'm sorry?
No, that's too little.
I was thinking like seven oh five. Or we just get right down to it and call it seven fifteen.
What about splitting the, the thirty-five thousand?
Say that again?
Half of the thirty-five thousand that they're asking for.
I can accept that.
Okay, I'll make that motion then.
Is there a second for that motion? I'll second that motion. Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Jamison?
Yes.
Deuce?
No.
Zimmerman?
No.
Mayor Richardson?
Oh, yes. The motion failed. Can I have a motion, uh, for the seven hundred thousand?
Second. I'll make the motion for seven hundred.
Is there a second for the seven hundred thousand? I will, I will second the seven hundred thousand, may we call the roll, please?
Councilmember Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Deuce?
No.
Jamison?
No.
Well?
We're just gonna play the game.
We are.
Okay, so I'll make a motion for seven twenty-five.
We just did that.
We, we were, we were seven seventeen-five. I said, said no to that.
Is there a second to that motion?
Sure.
Been moved and seconded, we go, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Deuce?
Yes.
Jamison?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
No.
Mayor Richardson?
No.
Well, I don't want to spend all night going back and forth like this, I suggest we table this.
If we don't have this number, we can't complete the budget.
That's the way it goes sometimes.
It's not on for final action to, tonight, anyway. It's, it's on for giving staff directions to come back with the budget at the next meeting.
So do we know, uh, so your conviction on, on the extra thirty-five thousand, uh, is based on, where's that money going? Why are you so convinced? Is there something you, you know that I don't know, or? Where is that money exactly going that we're so dead set on the additional thirty-five thousand?
Well, where's it, why are you so dead set on seven hundred thousand?
Because that's a lot of money.
It's all a lot of money, Neil.
All?
It's all a lot of money, everything on this list is a lot, is a lot of money. The idea is that that's the engine, that's the, they, they create the income.
Oh, I, I'm not, I'm not denying them that, they're doing a great job.
What I would like, that, that's valid, Neil, that's, that's valid. And I would like Tracy, uh, if, if I could bring her up again to ex, to explain the, the difference between seven and seven thirty-five, what that thirty-five thousand could do.
A single ad in Westways Magazine, one single ad, is six thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. A single co-op in order to market and put it in consistent ways, so you're not just one, where you don't just put out one thing at a time in advertising, you have to have a consistent presence. So when you do things like go to China, or go into a new market such as midweek sales, et cetera, that goes to the meeting business and not just leisure, you have to be able to have a presence in, on several different platforms. So that means you have a minimum presence that you can make as a single contractor, or being able to be out there and purposely, that twenty-five, that thirty-five thousand, that makes a difference between having a sales team or not, going into a new market or not. It's, it, it boils down to that. So this is how we're able to actually get into the two places where we can see the most bang for our buck the quickest.
Which are?
Hmm?
Which are?
China and our midweek sales.
So are we not established enough in the other markets to where we can divert resources?
I'm sorry, say again?
Are we not established enough in the other markets to divert some resources to make it work?
Well, there's established and then there's withdrawing. So, I mean, there's one thing, you don't want to take away from where you've actually got a presence, because then you're not there. And when you're not at the table, you're just flat out not there. And you know what that means in the competitive marketplace. So when your next door neighbor has a five million dollar budget, how do you get, you know, them to come thirty-five minutes further over the hill? That kind of, does that help a little?
So several years ago, when we were establishing the Atlantic Link, um, we, we dumped a lot of money into it to establish that. Granted, uh, we're, we're still working with them.
Yes, we do have a contract, that is a twenty-five thousand dollar contract.
And, and that was, that was a big jump. Well, I see the same thing with, uh, China now, uh, that that is another huge opportunity. We, 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 we've seen what the, uh, Atlantic Link has done for us. And, and, you know, what, what it was, it was, it was, it was a jump in revenue to, to get into that. I think we're, and, and it's paid off nicely, uh, you know, we can, we can see the numbers, uh, from that. And, um, uh, I, I think we can, um, certainly anticipate the same thing from, from China. Uh, the, the difference is with Atlantic Link, uh, versus China, China is a whole lot bigger. And, um, um.
One TV show that we had presence in China had three hundred million viewers. That's the kind of difference. The Visit California office now has five offices in China, so that we can have more of a presence over there. With the new airlift and how they're coming over here, it's our best deal for even when things are happening in other parts of the, uh, of the world. But the Atlantic Link and the Denmark connection, we went from having two tour companies that spent the night to twenty-six companies that are now spending two nights with tour buses at our hotel. So we have seen direct return on that investment.
Thank you. So, um, that was, to, to me, that, that's what the thirty-five will give you.
I'm happy to reconsider the seventeen-five.
Jim, I won't go under, um, seven twenty.
Seven twenty? Okay, I'll make that motion, seven twenty.
I'll, I'll reluctantly second it.
Been a motion made and seconded, we call the roll, please. And what was the motion?
For seven hundred and twenty thousand.
Seven twenty.
That's, that's twenty-five hundred dollars more than your seventeen.
Councilmember Jamison?
Yes.
Deuce?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
No.
Mayor Richardson?
Uh, yes.
Thank you.
That's a reluctant yes, because I, uh, I see that big hole up there with the parentheses around it. That, it, it concerns me. Our projections of increase in TOT are wonderful, it'd be, it'd be great to see it happen. And if it does happen, I'll be the first to, to thank you, Tracy. Tracy's, the two of you. And, uh, so, that's the reason for, that's the reason for my reluctance to go to the thirty-five. That, that issue has been resolved.
So, so we, I would suggest you move on to the agency funding, the, uh, I guess nonprofit is what we call them. And if you start with Attledag Village, I believe, we have another recuse, recusion? How do you say that?
Recuser.
Recusal.
I've got a recuse.
You have to recuse also?
Yeah, I've got a recuse. Need to stretch for a while, though.
Look at your air quotes.
Huh?
I'm, I'm stirring my hobble. Okay, the, uh, next budget item will be the Attledag Village.
And the request was for four thousand, and the subcommittee is recommending twenty-five hundred for that.
Any comments?
My only comment is I know how much they do for the community. He, Chris listed all the things that, all the organizations they do preparations of foods for. And if you don't have a refrigerator that can, that's operational, it's kind of hard to store things.
You, you know, we sat over in that office with them, going over those very same questions, trying to fe, trying to find an equitable distribution of the available monies we have. And, uh, and some people are gonna feel that we shorted them, some people are going to feel that we, uh, didn't consider all the possibilities, but believe me, we spent a lot of time, uh, to come up with these numbers. And as much as I would have loved to, it's, it's, you know, fifteen hundred dollars isn't a great deal of money, and I, and I, I think that we, uh, decided to put that fifteen hundred dollars to use in other organizations. And that's, uh, why we came up with the twenty-five hundred dollars for the Lutheran home. And, and, and God bless them. They do a wonderful service for the city, but in reality, their budget is much larger than the city of Solvang's budget. So, uh, so there's a, there's a give and take that we have on that area, too, so. So that's the reason that we came up with the, the twenty-five hundred dollar.
Well, since both of you, this is your number, why don't you make a motion? You two can vote yes, and I'll vote no.
Okay. I'll, I'll move that we, uh, that we grant the Solvang Lutheran Home twenty-five hundred dollars. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, will you call the roll, please?
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Zimmerman?
Yes.
Jamison?
No.
That passed with a three-two vote. Uh, we can bring back the recuser, the re, uh, recusers. Three to two. Two to one. You got it. It clarified, you had, the, the clerk had it correctly. Did you get stretched out okay?
Huh?
Did you get stretched out okay?
Oh, another half hour would have been fine.
Alright, on to the next item.
With that, we're at, uh, the council's will and pleasure as how you would like to do the rest of the budget approval.
Is, is anybody else going to have to recuse or abstain from any of the items? I'm going to abstain from one item, so I'd like that to be brought up next. Which would be the, uh, then we, then we can combine all the rest of them as one vote. And that would be the, uh.
Chamber of Commerce.
Solving Chamber of Commerce. And I'm recusing my, I'm, I'm, uh, abstaining from that vote because of a person, direct personal relationship with the families, with my family and their family, so. So, uh, can I have a motion accepting the Chamber's, uh, grant of sixteen-four?
Actually, the Chamber has two separate grants, Third Wednesday and, um.
Oh, I was gonna bring, okay, if you want to put that together as one, wrap it up as one?
I would, I would be happy to, to wrap that together with one, uh, one grant.
Just because I have lawyers had on, would we make it clear for the record so people understand that you do not actually have, uh, Political Reform Act conflict of interest?
That's right, I do not have.
And so you're not required to step down, you're just abstaining for your own personal reasons on the vote.
Abstain for all personal reasons, it's not required by the federal, by the Fair Political Practices Act.
Coward.
Okay, so, uh, so are we, are we gonna combine those numbers, the twenty, the, uh?
If someone makes that motion, that's what we would recommend.
Okay, so can I have a motion?
I'll make that motion that we combine the, um, the, uh, Chamber's sixteen-five and the, um, sixteen-four and the thirty-six from, um, Third Wednesday to create one for the Chamber of twenty thousand.
Is there a second?
I have.
Okay. Did I hear a second?
For purpose of discussion. I'll second.
Alright. It's been moved and seconded, is there a discussion?
Yes. Because what we're looking at was, it was requested as thirty-six hundred for the Third Wednesday, and it was recommended of twenty-seven fifty, and the.
The previous year.
Take that back, sorry, I went the wrong way. Okay, they're both thirty-six, okay. I'll, I'll re, re, revise my, uh, objection, so, okay, no, no, no discussion.
Alright, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Deuce?
Yes.
Skid?
Yes.
Jamison?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Abstain. Now we can combine the balance of the agency funding, is there any discussion, any changes? No?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I, I want to move that we, uh, raise the Solvang Library from the eighty-eight thousand to a minimum of a hundred thousand dollars. And to make up for it, uh, I want to take, uh, twelve thousand dollars from people helping people. And, because it's, uh, it's one of those things, it's, uh, the amount of their income, the people helping people, uh, it's a far smaller percentage of their, uh, overall budget. Uh, and I think that the, uh, Solvang Library is, is a major, uh, contributor to the valley, and, uh, I think it really would be a major accomplishment to give them the extra hundred, uh, extra twelve thousand dollars. Plus, we are coming up with, uh, the county budgeting for the library. And I think it would show good faith to the county that we are, uh, uh, increasing our contribution to the Solvang Library.
Your, your suggestion is to bump the library, uh, twelve thousand, and to decrease the people helping people by twelve thousand? And to, the people helping people, uh, will be a five thousand dollar.
That would be correct.
Right, okay. Is there any discussion on that?
I, I don't want to see us cut people helping people.
I'm sorry?
I don't want to see a cut in people helping people.
Any other discussion?
Um, I'd, I'd like to know what, uh, and this would, is, is Carrie still here, or? Oh, there you are. Um, what would, uh, what, what would twelve thousand, yeah, what would twelve thousand buy us? Could, could you come up, please?
I don't actually know.
You, you, you want to take a, you want to take a stab?
And ninety-nine-five hundred was the little figure that we had asked for, and what that would have done, um, would prevent us from having to go into reserves, nonexistent reserves, actually. So.
So, so a hundred thousand would maintain the status quo without going into reserves, basically?
Yes, I believe that is the best answer I can give on that.
Okay, thank you.
Can, um, for the library, can we wait and see what the county does? Because they're considering fifty cents to a dollar increase per capita. That's what Salud Carvajal asked the, um, his staff to do, to see what those numbers look like.
And when will their budget?
The fifteenth, don't they talk about on, they talk about on the fifteenth?
Why don't we put a placeholder in then at the eighty-eight? And then come back, uh, on the, when our, when our final approval of the budget's gonna be at the twenty-sixth.
What, what is the current per capita, is it still five or six fifty-something?
Seven dollars and change.
How much?
Seven eighty-one.
Seven eighty-one. And, and that was, that was last year, right?
Right.
Seven eighty-one.
And that was raising it by a dollar? Raised it by a dollar last year.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that would, that would, so if we raise, if, if. So that would, that would, so if we raise, if, if we ended up, if the county raises it by another dollar, it would go to?
Split between Buellton and...
Yeah, and that, that's the que- and that's the big argument we're having right now is how much we're getting between Buellton and solving. And, uh, right now, uh, from my point of view, and I think maybe Ms. Jamison's view, is that, uh, in our discussions with Buellton, uh, in trying to come up with an equitable split, if you take a look at the various services provided, that I feel we are currently getting the short end of the stick from the, from, on the way they did the split. And, uh, um, from our discussions, it doesn't really appear at the ti- right now that Buellton is, uh, amicable to maybe a discussion on rearranging the split between the City of solving and the City of Buellton for the funding. And I really, I think, you know, the, uh, current situation for the solving library is extremely, uh, dire. And, you know, at least, you know, it's, it's not as much as they want, but, but if we can keep them from at least going into a, uh, negative situation and the dollar, if it goes up a dollar, dollar and a half per capita, that, how much would that, Carrie, how much would that increase your budget by? Okay.
The cabinet's based for some population and so right now it's roughly twenty thousand for the entire valley. And, um, that is right now being split down the middle between solving and Buellton.
Right, and I think it, the...
That would increase it ten.
And that would be ten percent, but it's right now, the, if you take a look at the information the county worked with at one time, we were twenty, or take that back, it was approximately twenty thousand people, but solving was approximately thirteen thousand people service area and Buellton was approximately six thousand, sixty-five hundred in the service area. So, you know, if we, if, if it goes up a full dollar and we get the original schedule, then we would, it would be advantageous to us. But right now, uh, I'm Larry, cause we don't know what the county's gonna do. And, uh, the library is a very important part of our community, not only to our community, but also to our tourist community, cause we have a large number of tourists who utilize our library for their internet connections. I think if you talk to Carrie, there's a large number of tourists who come in on a weekly basis and utilize our library. And, uh, on that, that one there, uh, I can really see that, uh, the, uh, the, you know, the twelve thousand dollars would be very appropriate to go to the library. And, uh, like I said, it's the, uh, the, uh, the amount that, the decrease from people helping people, uh, it's a very, you know, small percent, it's less than one percent of their budget, it's about a half, or about point seven percent of their budget. And, uh, whereas, right now, we're looking at, let me place my figures. How much did you say our budget is right now? About eighty percent of the budget right now?
No, the eighty-eight was forty-three.
Forty-three percent of the budget. So, you know, we're, by forty-three, we'd maybe get it up to maybe fifty percent of the budget. So, I think on this particular area here, it would be, uh, very appropriate to support the library.
I think the whole purpose of, uh, giving more to the Visitors Bureau is to generate more. And if we're gonna cut community services, what's the whole point of trying to generate more money? Like, I don't think we should look at this as, let's take away twelve thousand from a community service.
We're taking it from one community.
When the argument is, uh, we're gonna generate more revenue if we give thirty-five thousand more dollars. There really shouldn't be a problem if, if you actually believe what you're standing by.
What I'm, what I'm saying is we're taking it from one community service to another community service.
And that's...
And I, and I, I feel that the community service of the library and their funding level is at such a point, they need a larger percentage of our discretionary funding than...
And I'm saying no community service should be cut.
Well, it's one of those things, in a perfect world, no community service should be, ever be cut. But, we're not living in a perfect world, we have, uh, you know, if we have more income coming in, we can raise it a later date. But I'm saying that it's, uh, uh, at this time, I really feel that the library is a major contributor to the Sanas Valley. And, and it's, it's, and it's going, and it's also affecting the people that, uh, that Dean and people helping people are utilizing. Cause a large number of the people who are being serviced by people helping people are also utilizing the library system for a lot of their comp- that is the only computer access that a lot of the people from the people helping people, uh, have access to. So, if we have to cut back the library and they have to shut down, those people who are serviced by people helping people are at a, become, at a disadvantage to other people. And I'm saying that for the amount of money of their budget, I know it's, I, I, I'm not against you personally, Dean, but it's the amount of money that is their budget versus the budget of the library, uh, I just, I have, uh, I feel that on this one here, it's one of these things, that the money is equally well-spent with the library as with people helping people.
Yeah, and I have full faith that the twenty thousand dollars to the Chamber of Commerce and the seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars to the Visitors Bureau will generate that money to not have to worry about cutting either service. Is that not why we raised, uh...
Right, but what I'm saying is right now, the, the eighty-eight thousand dollars is the equivalent of cutting service from the library. And it, by going to a hundred thousand dollars, we're at least maintaining the service to the library. Without having them go into non-existence, uh, reserves. It's possibly, and as they're talking about, the county budget is coming up on the fifteenth. You know, maybe we can, we, we put both items on hold and fund neither of them and see what the county comes up with. But I, I, right now, I feel that the, uh, the library is a very viable, uh, part of our community and needs this support. And, you know, I could've said I wanted all a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, but no, it's, I realize that's not a viable option, but I would say going up twelve thousand, it's a viable option. It gives the, uh, library support that it needs and it goes forward and shows at the cap, to the county that we are in support of our library system. And I believe Sher- Shirley Stacy mentioned earlier, or, or, either that was Shirley or Carrie, that maybe we need to put the library as a line item in our regular budget instead of this particular thing. I believe that one would be a situation where we would have to discuss with the public library of the City of Santa Barbara, since the solving library is a subsidiary of that budget. But maybe that's what we need to do in the future, is to put it as a separate, complete line item under our rec department or something else. But right now, I think it's one of those situations where, uh, I, I think, you know, you know, twelve thousand dollars is a, uh, a doable, uh, funding for the library.
I think what I heard is you were asking for a hundred thousand for the library, but taking away minus twelve, and I think Neil was saying to not take away the twelve. So he's not disagreeing with a hundred for the library. So I think that motion, you may get a second if you modify the second part of it.
What worth, but the next thing is where do we get the twelve thousand dollars?
And, and you know, I was gonna say that same thing before Brad jumped in. Um, if, if you were just to make the motion on the library and not include, uh, people helping people necessarily in that, just, and see where it goes. We, there, there could be, there could be a number of different approaches.
Okay, I have, I have not made a motion at all, I made a discussion. So I will make a motion that we increase the library funding to one hundred thousand dollars.
I'll second it.
All right, for discussion, if we do that, our total grants will be equalling one million dollars. Right now, at the grants we've approved so far, we're at nine hundred and eighty-eight thousand. We add another twelve, we go to a million.
That's where we are. We put the chips, we put the chips in the middle and we're banking on making the money on the T O T.
And we, original, our original, uh, budgeting was for nine sixty-eight. So we're going up, uh, quite a steep amount. And, and believe me, all these grants are necessary for these folks. And we tried to get an, a fair and balanced grant, uh, to everyone. And, and God bless you for thinking of them and, and for trying to help out more, but we're at the position, we can't afford that kind of stuff.
We've already done it. We're already there. We've crossed the line.
We, we crossed the line at nine eighty-eight, right, so far.
So we gotta just go with it, right?
So we wanna go up another twelve, make it an even million?
Yeah.
Is there a motion?
There's a motion on the floor and it has been seconded.
It's been seconded. Call for the question.
Is there any discussion on the motion? No, okay, call the roll.
Councilmember Skid?
Yes.
Deuce?
Yes.
Jamison?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
No. That passed. The, uh, the library will get a hundred thousand? And we're, and we had no mention of pulling it away from any, any other, uh...
Right.
My discussion, my discussion on pulling away from anything else was...
Okay. So we're at one million dollars of, uh, agency requests.
I'd like to make it a little bit less. Um, I cannot see giving animal, animal rescue seventy-five hundred dollars at this point in time.
I'm sorry?
I cannot see giving animal rescue seventy-five hundred dollars at this point in time.
Do we wanna discuss animal rescue at this time?
I, it was brought up. Uh, I, I agree with, um, Councilman, Councilman Jamison on that one, so. What would, what would you say?
Pick a number, Eddie.
Split the difference in thirty-seven fifty?
Sounds good to me.
Hold on, so we're gonna be at nine hundred ninety, uh...
Hey, is it?
Six thousand twenty-five? Is that... Where, where, how, how, we think around here? Is that really what we're doing? Three thousand bucks?
I don't, I don't think it's necessary. We've increased animal, um, what do we call it? With the county, we increased the...
Animal control.
Animal control.
Services, yeah.
Um, I do not, I do not appreciate some of the things that, uh, animal rescue does. The fact that they're trying to rescue coyote pups, just ask a farmer, ask a rancher about coyotes. They are not their favorite creature. They do a lot of destruction and they kill a lot of, they kill our neighborhood cats. You know, they're, they're not a good creature to have. So I, I, I was appalled when I read that. So that's my, my opinion.
That, that same argument can be said for mountain lions and bobcats. They kill the sheep, they kill dogs and cats.
So should we just exterminate all of them?
She's not, she's not bringing those in.
She is. She is bringing, she's rescuing bobcats.
Okay, but not a whole litter of pups. Hey, have you ever seen what a coyote does? You saw what a coyote does to a calf?
She was, she was also rescuing a blind coyote in a, in a reservoir.
She didn't complete her application. She didn't turn in the thing. She was given a second chance and she did not complete her application. I don't even think we should be considering it. Santa Barbara County wouldn't consider it, the City of Santa Barbara wouldn't consider it, and Santa Maria wouldn't consider it. It's not a complete application. And we've asked her time and again to provide information and she doesn't do it. And she didn't even come.
There were, there were, um, two other agencies that were asked for information at the same time. Both of them complied. Uh, they, they, and, and so it's not that we're picking on anybody, it's, we wanted to know. And, uh, that's part, to me, that's part of the, uh, that's part of the process, that's part of the application, is, uh, the, the follow-up. So, I...
Make a motion that we give her three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars.
I think that's generous.
I do too.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, twenty-seven fifty?
Thirty-seven fifty.
Thirty-seven fifty? All the roll, please.
Who made the motion?
I didn't.
Ms. Jamison.
Councilmember Jamison?
Yes.
Yes.
Skid?
Yes.
Deuce?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
No.
Mayor?
Uh, no. That passed with a three-two vote. So we can, we take, we can offer a million dollars. Thank you.
Right, nine ninety-six, two fifty.
Hey, every little bit helps.
That we accept the rest of the, uh, items on the proposal. Unless there's some people that wish to withdraw something.
Were there any discussion about that? That we take the balance of the, of the, uh, funding as presented? Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Question, uh, just question for, uh, Mr. Hanley. Now, this is a preliminary budget and we're having the final budget in two weeks?
Correct.
So, there, there, there is the possibility if we do some, that there could be some changes for the final budget. Is that correct?
Yes, it would be painful, but yes.
Yes. Oh, come on. That's why you get paid the big bucks. Okay, thank you.
That's for him, it won't be.
Can I have a roll call vote on that, please?
Councilmember Jamison?
Yes.
Skid?
Yes.
Deuce?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
No.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes. That was a pass.
I just wanna interject the, the question of will there be changes? I think Senator did point out a couple of things that will definitely change. One was the transit budget and the other was the lead painting for sure, that, that number. So there will be two, for sure, two changes.
And there could be, depending on what the county does on the fifteenth, there could be additional changes, so.
That's the end of that item, that agenda item. Now, we have a rule about starting another agenda item after nine o'clock. Yes?
Do you have any other comments on the rest of the budget as presented?
There you go. Any other comments on the budget as presented?
I just appreciate the answers to some of the questions that I asked for the clarification. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Is it, we, should we take public comment? Karen? Please, please come to the mic.
Good evening, I'm Karen Wade. I'm a solving resident, intended candidate for City Council. Um, I, you know, I, this was a really very interesting process to watch, uh, very, very in-depth and complicated. But I did, I just wanted to make a general comment that in other organizations that I belong to, when one is applying for a grant, if you don't show up to explain your organization, you don't get the money. And I think you all were very generous in, in giving some money to, to an organization that did not even show up to explain and apparently didn't have a complete application. So that, that's my comment.
Thank you.
After watching that, are you still sure you wanna run for City Council?
She, she's gonna make changes. She, she's going to make changes. With that, shall we discuss going, do we need to take a vote on the overall budget?
I think we have direction, this was a workshop to provide direction for staff, and I believe we have adequate direction.
With that, then we have to question item, item nine, it's after nine o'clock, do we want to continue with that item?
There's no need to finish that item.
We can table that until next meeting.
On the other hand, it's only going to take about a minute.
That's true.
Oh, it's going to take a minute? Then if we...
I'll lose my voice if I talk any longer.
His voice will take care of, so.
All right, then, item nine.
Item nine, biannual review of conflict of interest code.
Staff report?
By state law, we have to, every even-numbered year, same time the Giants win the pennant, is review our own conflict of interest code, the same state law says we have to have a conflict of interest code, it's essentially duplicative of the Political Reform Act, and so I've taken a look at it, we have had no changes in positions, there's no legal reason to make any changes to your conflict of interest code, and I don't recommend any. I did include a copy of an outrageously complicated conflict of interest code from someplace else, in case you were interested as a council in exploring that idea, but I don't recommend doing that.
I move we accept.
We have to have public comment.
We have to wait for any questions of the staff report? Seeing there none, then we can go to the public for comments, is there any public comment regarding this item? Seeing none, we'll come back to the, to the council for action.
I move we accept the report from legal counsel.
I second it.
That was, the recommendation was review the conflict of interest code, I don't even think we need a motion to discover that, we reviewed it.
I can do the appropriate report to the FPPC.
And then will you read the closed session items, please?
Are we doing, no, we do council reports and then...
There's, I didn't know there was going to be any council.
Oral reports?
Council reports, and there's none.
None, okay, usually you have your, that's right, we didn't...
I go to SB CAG next week, this week. Advanced Council on Action, closed session, item twelve.
Closed session items, Government Code Section 54957.6, Conference with Labor Negotiators, Agency Designated Representative Brad Viardro, City Manager, Employee Organization Teamsters Local 986, and Government Code Subdivision A of Section 54956.9, Existing Litigation, Amendment to Permit 15878 in front of the State Water Resources Control Board.
That we adjourn to closed session.